Now.
Test, test.
I know it's six, we're waiting for our city attorney, we're gonna give another minute or so.
Oh, look at this. Hi, Dom. Hi, Ruth Ann. There's Pat. Hi, Pat.
How are you, sir?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Arriving.
Too important, sir. Like to call the working meeting at City of Oglesby to order.
Baldridge. Eutis.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Steph Mallory.
Here.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, we've done this once before, and I'd like to keep kind of the same format, just so you know. The first three items will kind of be formal items that we would normally take care of at a regular meeting, and then everything else after that are more discussion, so they're more open. Last time, we did have a lot of people talking from the public in the middle of the meeting. I don't have a problem with that if it's initiated from the council or one of the commissioners or something, but I would like to keep some of that chat to a minimum because I want to make the focus of the conversations up here. But if there is value from the public even in the middle of the meeting, I think that's fine. With that being said, public comment on agenda items only. Borrowing none. Next item is number five, approved purchase of email accounts and domain. Did you want to talk about this? You want me to talk about it? I can talk about it a little bit.
Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Is there a proposal in the packet, Jason?
There is, there is not.
We haven't gotten that far.
So, we had to have this put out on Monday for the agenda, but it's a pretty good... So, what happened is on Monday, we applied for OglesbyIL.gov domain. I got contacted by them yesterday that said they needed to verify that we did indeed put that in. I had to do some weird verification thing on the phone of everything, and so our application is active. We're essentially gonna get that, so we should have it within 20 days. That being said, we are looking at the, going through the same company that the police use for their email situation, and it's about a dollar a month per email, just over. Not even, it's less, it's over a dollar and under a dollar and a penny a month is how much it costs. So, we're gonna look to go through that. We cannot start that process, though, until we own the domain. That's the problem. So, the domain is getting, coming online. We are able to switch. We're looking at, clerk, I don't know, have we, we probably haven't gotten those prices yet for the cost to move over the, I think they were relatively cheap, though, right? To move the city's website over to the official domain?
So, twenty dollars, or twenty dollars set up, ten dollars a year hosting fee, and then they would bill their hourly charts if there are any difficulties moving those over or working with networks.
So, my understanding was the cost was so minimal to switch that hosting over. It's probably nothing we need to approve at this level, but the thing is, we can't set up the email addresses until the domain is here. However, since we will have the domain and know what the email addresses are, we could order cards ahead of time if we wanted to. Is that something that we're interested in? I know you had a concern about either the logo or making sure we went through a specific company or something like that?
Well, as far as the email goes, I want, I want all the bills to be, you know, give us one bill for everything altogether. That's the main concern I had. As far as the cards, I would just go to somebody local.
Okay. So, I don't know if we wanna, we can put something together now that we know the email address is what they'll be, and we can put something out to everybody and see if they're good with that format, and that would be the cards we get. So, that way, hopefully by the time the cards are here, emails should be up and active.
I never did hear, did we decide to go with first initial last name with the commissioner? I never heard what the consensus was. I know you sent out a feeler.
Yeah. So, oddly enough, I got one for names, one for titles, and then two other people had a different opinion on, different things. So, I broke the tiebreaker. I think titles sound more professional because the names will be on the cards. Like, your name will be on the card, so that way the title will match the email, is what I thought would go with. So, all right. Anything else on that? More to come on that. Next up.
Jason, you have a hand raised.
How many emails, is it a dollar to order per email account?
It's a hundred and twenty.
And who are we gonna get, and each member inside does he want to be gonna get an email?
All city employees.
All city employees.
Will have an email.
It's a hundred.
And elected officials.
It's a hundred and twenty-nine dollars for 10 years, so it comes out to just over a dollar a month.
Well, as many accounts as you want.
That is correct. No, per email, per email, per each email.
Account.
Account. Does that make sense? Okay.
Well, if we have 50 employees, it's gonna be fifty dollars a month, right?
Yep, approximately. All right. Next up, number five, approved purchase, oh, sorry, number six, approved resolution for sale of old bucket truck. There is some discussion on this. I don't know if we want to go over it tonight or if we just want to table this item.
Can I ask that we table this item?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table it. Second.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Eutis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Mallory.
Aye.
Turn.
Aye.
Number seven, formal apology to Charis Chemical.
Yeah. So, the previous council meeting, the information I had at that time was that Charis's insurance companies left, last offered us was eighty-five percent of our losses for the fire. I guess there was a message left on that Friday. We were busy with Fun Fest, and that message unfortunately never got checked until Tuesday morning. So, when it came out on Tuesday morning, I was already getting phone calls from Tom Collins, and I issued an apology to him, and I said I'd issue a formal apology at the council meeting. So, I am sincerely sorry to Charis for putting out false information. I didn't know that was false at that time, on my defense, but anyway, I feel bad that I put them in the press unnecessarily.
And I'd like to echo Commissioner Eutis's sentiments there because the message was left in the clerk's office, so it was basically where my area of oversight is. So, I echo his sentiments, and I'm glad that we were able to come to a resolution on it.
Yep. That's the important thing, too, that they did come and, I don't know if you mentioned it, they did fill the hundred percent.
They did fill a hundred percent on that Friday. That was their offer.
Excellent.
So, we've been made whole for all our losses. I think it was twenty thousand, seven hundred and something dollars, if I recall correctly.
All right. So, next up, and again, I want to preface, you know, the rest of this entire meeting is very informal, okay? If we were to close the meeting right now, get up and walk out and call the meeting off, all we do is maintain status quo. Nothing changes. So, everything that we're here to talk about is to try to find ways to improve things, enhance things, work together. So, there's no such thing as really a bad opinion about stuff, so it's an open discussion. All right. Next up is number eight, discuss maternity leave policy.
Yeah. So, I put this on the agenda. I want to talk about it. Right now, the city does not have any light duty provisions or time allotted for maternity leave. And I don't know that that's fair to our employees, especially our minority of our females, who, even if they're in a bargaining unit, they're certainly in minority, which means that if there's a vote of the membership to prioritize items that are important to you, that's probably never gonna be surfaced to the top, just because of the structure of how it is within the genders of the bargaining units. So, what I'd like to talk about is maybe developing a policy to, number one, allow for light duty at a certain point within the pregnancy, and also potentially add some hours that a female will be able to take off for childcare after birth. I think it suggests you're a good will within the city, and it also keeps us competitive within the space. So, as you know, I have a very difficult time getting people, police officers, and that's a problem that goes everywhere in the Illinois Valley and beyond. So, if they realize that they can leave and go to, let's say, LaSalle, who gives them light duty and 80 hours, that really puts us at a disadvantage. So, I didn't know what the thought process was from the council and whether this is something that I, that you think that you could support.
Are there any other local news stations that have this already?
Yeah. So, a lot of them have stuff off the books, and they allow basically for light duty and accrued time to be used. However, there are other ones in the area that, like, LaSalle gives 80 hours, and even getting into, the state police give four hundred hours. Getting into some of our, even our factories around here, like Walmart gives nine weeks and a hundred percent pay for maternity leave, which I think is pretty outstanding. Target's six weeks, PetSmart's four weeks, UPS is three weeks, Shell is eight weeks, Love's is eight weeks, and this is all a hundred percent paid. Charis is 12 weeks. So, that's kind of what I have for a lot of the comparables. Now, most of the ones that I'm cited here for police departments, I wouldn't call them necessarily direct comparables within our Illinois Valley area. So, I really like, I really like to stay ahead of the curve, if you will, to be able to offer something that is gonna make us more attractive as an employer and attract people within our departments.
Terry.
Yeah.
Just so you know, maternity leave doesn't necessarily have to be female.
Well, there's maternity leave and paternity leave.
Right.
The way I understand it. So, I will make the argument that maternity leave is for a female, and paternity leave is for a male.
Right. All of that gets, you know, same.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to any discussion that people may have. At this point, what I'm, my biggest area of concern right now is the females, but I don't think, in my opinion, the males should get as much time as the females. If we did something for female employees, I'd be a player if we did like half the time that we gave the females. So, if we gave, if we gave a female 80 hours, let's say, I would be in favor of giving a male 40 hours. Well, you can, but it's unpaid, Rich. It's completely unpaid, and you can get up to 12 weeks off. But it's, you're absolutely correct, Rich. It is covered under FMLA. It's just that it's not a paid benefit.
So...
What's, I didn't hear.
Is your mic on?
The paternity leave is what I was thinking of.
Yeah. If you want to do paternity, you could do FMLA absolutely, and you can get up to 12 weeks off. You don't lose any benefit level. You know, they're gonna maintain their health insurance and whatnot, but that would be unpaid, and that is an option that would be open to our male fathers.
So, a couple of amplifying things. Terry and I had a conversation with the labor attorneys because one of the items we're gonna get down to the bottom here is the personnel policy and stuff like that. And, you know, since there was some emergent issues that he had in the police department, we had that conversation, and one of them that we led into was talking about maternity leave. And one of the things I, that he brought up that I thought was really important distinction is, so we've had pregnant people in the city before, but as to my knowledge, the only pregnant people that's been in the city has been somebody that already works in a light duty environment already, such as the clerk's office. So, that is a great point. If we had somebody in the police station, or if we have somebody, let's say, for some reason in the future, we hire somebody in the street department and stuff like that. We really can't be having, you know, people doing physical labor works in their 39th week of pregnancy. That's not a thing. So, we probably should develop some form of light duty policy to make sure that we can cater to stuff like that. And then we talked about it. I think we wanted to hold off on that to see how everybody felt here today about that, if we wanted to pursue that, or pursue something that was more than just light duty and going to something else. I'll be honest, I'm concerned that if we go into some kind of thing that we give a benefit to somebody that's outside of the collective bargaining agreement, we're getting into a bit of a can of worms. That's a concern of mine. My time in the military, they had a thing that the first six weeks was always given off to all, to all women, and that was free. And then the six weeks after that, they could take an unpaid period or something strange like that. Near the time I was getting ready to retire, that's when they started opening up, that the men were getting a portion of that. I think it was two weeks at the very tail end of that. But then it started, right as I was leaving, it opened up all kinds of other questions about people that adopt and all. And then you have the whole gender thing between which gender is which, because if you're gonna put a benefit in for one gender versus not the other gender, it's a, it's a bit of a can of worms.
Well, we're still of the position that only females, biological females can have children, correct?
That is my position as well.
Okay. I don't think there's any ambiguity there. I don't think there's anything to parse over. I'm just saying, I'm not trying to be a wise guy. I'm saying that can be spelled out by a qualified attorney.
So, the concern I have with that, though, is we start getting, we do have other, for example, there is another male employee that has a wife that's about to give birth and stuff like that. If that's something that everybody wants to feel, if I'm in the minority, that's fine. I'm a little concerned about that. I'd rather focus on the health and safety things first by making sure we have something in the policy that talks about a light duty option. Because I'll be honest, as mayor of the city, if we had a pregnant female here and we didn't give them time, and all of a sudden they did something in the line of their duty and lost a child, I'd have a hard time living with myself. I really would. And if it's just based on a policy that we could run.
I think it's up to us not to put them in that position, and if I, if I could weigh in on this, I think part of our role being up here as the elected folks is we have an obligation to carry out and represent the values of the folks in this city that put us up here. And I think discouraging a female employee from having children because they may not get the assistance they need doesn't accurately represent the values of the folks in the city of Oglesby, as far as the ones that I know of. So, I commend Commissioner Eutis for even bringing this up because it's, he's correct. It's not a popular thing in a profession that's typically dominated by men. So, I think it's, I'm all for it. I think it's a positive thing, and I think for us as the elected folks, I think we're taking a step forward, and we're doing a good thing here and carrying out positive values.
Well, I agree with everything you said, except I think you tried to paint a light that if we don't do that, that we're not here to support families. I mean, we've had people that's had children that work in this building before. I don't think we don't not support them because we offer them, you know, FMLA time that we're authorized by state law to do and everything like that, and then we work with them. You know, I don't know.
I think traditionally, you've seen us all over the roadmap with how we handle different situations. And my feeling is by putting something in writing, I think, number one, it would be very easy way to get this accepted by our labor unions because why would they say no? Because it's a free benefit for them that we're giving them. Number two, if they want to try to negotiate something better than what we're offering in our policy at their next contract opening, have at it. But my position's gonna be that we already had a policy set citywide, and this is what I'm gonna stick to my guns on, so that's where I'm at with it.
Well, I definitely think we need to do something with a light duty thing. That, to me, is the first.
I'm for doing more than that, Jason. I think you know my feeling on that.
Yeah, I do.
I don't know. I think, it sounds like Tony is also in favor of that, but I need to know what the position of the other two commissioners are.
I'd personally like to suggest that we work on an ordinance now and get something passed very soon, like not messing around for months at a time. I'm talking the next meeting or two.
What do you, what do you mean by ordinance?
Whatever we have to do to get this put in to effect.
What, do you want hours, Richard? Do you want, do you want?
I think we should do hours and time, but the time.
How many hours are we thinking?
I would think that we could possibly talk to the labor attorney, come to a consensus, and see what's fair, and we're, look at all the other places that do it.
Comparables.
That's fair to everybody, not, but I think we should move on this pretty quickly. These are younger people. We don't want to lose anybody.
Well, the good news is, as far as, as far as working on...
Okay.
As far as working on the part about getting the, the light duty stuff in there, they're ready to pull the trigger on that because we already came up with some things that they were gonna be working on. They were gonna hold off on that one. So, that aspect, they're all ready to rock and roll.
We could make them both, couldn't we, and have the light duties ready to go.
I think if, I think, didn't we talk about that, if we're gonna do something that we give a group of employees, then we have to get that in a side letter of agreement.
Or a memorandum of understanding.
My vision is to have this not only signed off by the labor unions, but I feel that this should be the same policy for everybody within the city, whether you're union or not, because I don't think it should just be for our union employees. I think all of our employees are valuable, and we should treat them all the same, as it pertains to this.
I agree with that. We can't give one class.
No. It has to be across the board. I agree with you.
I'm just looking for a way to streamline it, and like if it's easier for us to put out right now the light duty and figure out a better, more fair way with maternity leave, I think we should do the separate parts and get them going as fast as we can. If we can get the maternity leave on the same one, that'd be great.
I could have something ready to conditionally approve contingent upon ratification by our labor unions by next meeting, if that would be acceptable.
Absolutely.
Yeah, bring something up.
Do you have a thought on that, Mac?
I agree. Need to get four and get it done, so.
All right. So, you got a consensus.
Since we have folks here, is it, to be courteous to their time, is it a good idea to move 14 up so they're not just sitting through the rest of all this?
I don't have a problem with that if that's what everybody wants to do.
I'm just trying to be courteous to their time. I'm pretty sure they're not gonna sit here and want to hear everything else.
This isn't very light being.
Except for what doesn't affect them.
There is an actual point of that, though. There is a, there is that there.
So, here, I, I, I...
Point of privilege, point of privilege.
Point of privilege. I move, I move to move point 14 to the next thing to be addressed on our agenda.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
It does, if you're gonna go out of order.
A clerical call or roll.
Aye.
Eutis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Mallory.
Aye.
Turn.
Aye.
Okay. So, jumping ahead, number 14, discuss petition from bar owners about extending the noise nuisance time. So, there is a petition sign here. Where is it at? Here. There you go. So, I should read it. This was dated, it's actually dated June 1st. I think I didn't see it until Friday before the last meeting, though. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, I'm writing on behalf of myself and several other local bar owners to request the amendment of Oglesby Ordinance 8.64 governing the control of noise within the various district classifications of the city. Specifically, Table A in 8.64.70 sets forth a day and night framework with the night range later referred to as quiet time. Ordinance 8.64.70 also established how noises to be measured. Directing the noise levels shall be measured at the approximate location of the property line or the boundary of the public way at a height of at least four feet above the immediate surrounding surface. The business owners signed this letter humbly requesting the elected officials of Oglesby amend the ordinance controlling noise, amend the day range in Table A altering it from 10:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. during the weekends of May through October. Also, that the established method of measuring the noise in the instance of a citizen complaint be changed from the approximate location of the property boundary to the complainant's location at the time the complaint was made. We believe these changes would bring in more revenue to the city while supporting the social atmosphere and nightlife in the downtown area, which in turn will help support business coming in the area. Thank you in advance for your time concerning this matter. The following city of Oglesby bar owners, I can't make out all the names, but I do believe it is Dave Whedon, Rich Baldridge, Lisa Carrico, Lizzie, Tommy Auger-Bright. I can't read the other ones offhand, though.
Laura is from East End.
That's East End, Laura Wilsman. Is that what that is? I didn't know if it was Wolf. Okay.
And Lauren Young.
Okay. So, that is the petition on the table. I guess I can start off the conversation. I like the idea of having at least, at least a part of the time that we have a later time that we can do. I know other municipalities near us are doing something like that. I think it's a good idea to be competitive and to have stuff like that. I don't know if we're ever gonna get to the point of like Key West, Florida, that'll have bands at 1:00 a.m. in the morning and stuff like that because we're not a tourist thing, but you never know what happens, you know, five, 10 years from now if we become a tourist destination. So, I think there's some value there. I will say that there has been some complaints in the past. I don't have a lot of details if it's in regards to the noise just being too loud or if the noise going over time. I don't have a lot of those details there. But I thought we'd open it up for a discussion and see what everybody thinks about it.
All due respect with the complaints, there is very few considering that the list that Mike provided to us, number one, we didn't even know if they were related to noise or fights or not. He just went down to responses to our bars on weekends, and he went back to 2019. And I want to say each year, there were like just a handful. I mean, I can't, one hand, I count them all per year. So, like I said, to have that just for fights and also noise, to me, we don't have an issue with it. That's just my opinion. I personally am 100% for keeping, going to 11 o'clock for the bar owners to make them thrive, and I think it's a good position for the city to take, in my opinion.
Yeah. And you know what? In all honesty, we all ran on a platform of wanting to help the businesses in town, especially all the other stuff that's on this agenda. This isn't controversial, like somebody looking to open up a bar in a residential neighborhood. We're talking about the downtown district, and we have an obligation to help those businesses, and that's what I ran on, and my position is that I'm gonna vote for this. I'm a positive.
Okay. What else we think on it?
I agree. I mean, if anybody was paying attention to this stuff.
I think, I think he signed it, so I'm pretty sure that says it all.
It was a few years back here. They took the two o'clock closing time from the three o'clock closing time. So, I mean, you know, an eye for an eye here. I think that this would be great to help out.
I'm trying to, I don't have the ordinance, I guess I probably do have it in front of me. They're buried. But the only thing I could think about is, because we said we don't want to have it. I think our thing doesn't define between zone classifications, right? It just says 10 o'clock.
I have no idea. I didn't even know this was on.
Oh, you didn't get an agenda?
No.
8.64.
Seventy.
Forty, sixty.
Does it talk about zone classification? It does have it. So, in here, it has sound pressure level limits that go till 10:00 p.m., and they are different between residential, commercial, and industrial. So, the only thing I'm thinking is if we're gonna change the time, the time would change the chart.
Yeah, they're changing the time in the chart.
Because I don't think we want to change the time for residential, right?
No. It's not in a residential neighborhood. This is commercial. And I, I mean, once discussion's up, I'm gonna make a motion that we amend the municipal code to reflect these changes that are requested by the...
I don't think we can do that tonight.
Why not?
Because it's not on the agenda, is that.
Well, why would we put this on?
Discuss that and give me some ordinance, and I can prepare and bring it to the next meeting.
Well, I'm just saying, we're, now, now we're just dragging along. This was something that, I mean, there's no reason we shouldn't take action on it. Now, we're gonna push it off till Monday? That doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
I would, I would, I would say, one of the problems with it is, is the chart's gonna have to change. The way, you see what I'm saying? When it says seven to 10, you're gonna have to make a secondary chart in here because if you want to keep it seven to 10 for residential, you have to have a different one for commercial.
You'll have to separate the two.
Yeah.
So, there'll be a residential chart, there'll be a commercial chart, and there'll be an industrial chart?
Um, you could almost probably leave the residential, industrial the same because they have the same timeframe. I don't even know why industrial's on there because they're, see, look at that. Their, their, their sound pressure limits are the exact same at all times, so I'm not even sure why they're on the chart.
You would have to separate.
They're 80 no matter what.
Well, if this is on the agenda, I'm assuming that we were able to take action on it. So, I don't, I don't see the, I don't even see the value of putting something on the agenda if there's no action to be taken and then holding these people off yet another, another week now.
I would, I would...
I think we all, we all have our opinion, our minds made up.
I think that's an attorney question, Tony. What's the legal?
Pat, what's, what's your thought?
What's the legal opinion?
We have to have the ordinance before you to act on it.
There's more to it.
There's a discussion item on it.
Well, then, then we need to put something together then because I think everybody's weighed in on this at this point.
It's more, it's more than that, though, because here's the thing. This is a working meeting, and we've said if we don't take any action here, nothing, you know what I'm saying? So, there might not be as many residents paying attention to this type of meeting. So, if we come out of it positive saying that we want to do that, I want to make sure that we give residents the opportunity to know that, hey, it's on the agenda.
All right, fair enough.
Approved modification of that.
So, Pat, do you think that by our next council meeting, you can have the paperwork that we need so that the council can take action and we're not unnecessarily holding up the business owners on it?
Yeah, except we only have three days, business days before Tuesday, and then we have the next council meeting, which is next Wednesday.
So...
I'll do my best, but it depends on how many other things you give me to do here tonight
because there's only so much time between now and next Wednesday.
I think this one is something that we could...
I know it's a popular decision, but that, I'm, I'm just, I don't want to ever rush into anything because you make 10 people happy, you make 100 people angry, all right?
Well, I don't see the 100 people here, respectfully.
I understand.
I mean, the owners, the people who have signed have taken their time.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I understand. Do you have, do you have a question, Dave? Because I got it, I didn't see it until Friday, the day before the.
Come up to the podium.
Did you wanna come up to the podium? What's that? Because I first got it Friday.
It's on the agenda, Dave. It's on the agenda.
He's talking about the last one. He's talking about the last meeting. The last meeting, I did get it before there, but I got it, I got it Friday, you know, right before. During, right before the day of Fun Fest going on. So we were actually trying to have the agenda. What's that? I, I saw it first Friday and we were trying to get our agenda actually completed by Tuesday that week. I think we were, then we kept, it slid, it slid and everything like that, so.
We're trying to do the Wednesday before the Monday.
Mr. Stephenelli would be a good person to ask about that because I think he's trying to do something to make it a little more. If you look at the past, we've had a lot of chaos right up to some of our council meetings trying to get things in. We're trying to get things in by Wednesday unless there's some kind of dire emergency, so that way we can have a little more streamlined thing. Friday's not chaos, the attorney's not trying to rush things. I mean, if there's something that's an emergency, we can always bend over backwards to do something. But in my opinion, I don't agree that this is something that's an emergent issue. As far as I know. When does that ordinance set? Is that the date under it? Sometimes they put the date thing under it. Two thousand six. So this was last modified in two thousand six. So for us to say that this is a dire emergency and it's been in that book since two thousand six.
I don't think it's a dire emergency. What I'm trying to say is that it's a very easy fix. It's not something, I mean, I think we've discussed it at this point. We have a consensus.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we put this as our number one priority for Pat Berry to have prepared for the next meeting.
And I just wanna make sure I understand what you wanna do. So are you only changing the times for the commercial district?
That would be my expectation.
So let's.
Correct. Then I would second that.
Okay. Let's hold up before.
We have a motion in a second.
Let's hold up before we do.
We have a motion in a second.
Oh, the chart's coming out.
Hold on. I don't think you can just force a motion out of that.
We had a discussion before the motion was made, Jason.
Point of information. I wanna, I need a point of information.
Point of order?
What's that?
A point of order or a point of information?
Point of information.
It's point of information. That's what he's asking for.
We, I think there's more information we need to talk about. Can I get a point of information before we get a, I can't make the motion, though.
Well, we still have a motion in a second on the floor at this point. And we've had discussion.
Only the commissioners can.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think you can have more discussion.
I prefer discussion, but if, but if nobody else offers a point of privilege or a point of information or something like that, then the motion will go up for a vote.
Unless you wanna have discussion.
I don't think I can stop them. I don't think I can. If I wanna talk about something.
They could certainly allow a discussion of the time.
They can. I'm just trying to do it properly.
I mean, I think we've kinda, we've achieved a consensus here. I don't think that.
If you guys have any other information on it, then. Okay, because we haven't even talked about the month in there. Do we wanna do May through October? That was my question.
That's what I wanna do.
Is that what's being requested here?
That is what's being requested. And there's also something else in here that we haven't talked.
May through October, is that what you guys are requesting?
Okay.
Fair, fair enough.
The chart doesn't specify months.
So then you need to add back to it as well. And then there's another thing in here that they're asking for a change. So there's really, there's three changes. They're asking for timeline change, they're asking for a time of year change, and they're also asking for the method of how they measure noise complaints. So that's what I'm saying. We can't just be approving something off. I mean, there's three things.
What I asked for, Jason, was to put this at the front of Pat's plate. That's what I asked for.
That is the, the motion, unless somebody has.
And I, and I think, you know, if, if, if somebody has something to offer about the things you just cited, they're more than welcome to come up. This is, this is the whole intent of the meeting. So I think the bar owners have weighed in. I haven't seen a resident come up and complain anything about it. Greg's got his hand up if you wanna have.
I would disagree that that is not the point of this meeting, because this is supposed to be open discussion for things. And other people might not be paying atten, they might not care, but now that we put it on the agenda that we're going to approve it for a formal meeting, then they might wanna come to say something.
We're not passing.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, I don't think there's anything underhanded about this. It's on the agenda. We've done it the right way.
The three things. And then they wanna change the method of where you measure the noise. Oh, don't get me wrong. I wish there'd be a way for us for the right time of year to go to midnight, if we could.
That's up to us.
But I wanna make sure we're doing it right. Did you have a question, sir?
I did. Is there any way that you could do a temporary approve for this weekend, the three day weekend, the Fourth of July? That seems to be a concern to at least one or two bar owners.
Probably shouldn't even allow it to come up because technically there was a motion on the floor. I, I would like to talk about it a little bit more detail.
I disagree with that. If we're doing something, let's do it.
Okay, because there are other cities near us that do a.
I don't wanna be the other cities.
Okay. Well, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Call the roll.
Call, please.
Paul Bridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephenelli?
Aye.
Of staying. Okay.
So maybe I'm missing something, but the existing ordinance says that the sound pressure levels shall be measured at the approximate location of the property line or boundary line of the public way at a height of at least four feet above the immediate surrounding surface on a sound level meter of standard design and operated on the A waiting, waiting network. The request is levels shall be measured at the approximate location of the property line or the boundary line of the public way at a height of at least four feet above the immediately surrounding surface, which seems to be to me exactly what it says.
I think that just says what it, what it was. They're actually asking something different. Yeah, they're actually asking.
Because it's obviously gonna be loud at the source. You can't have a guy that's too house sounding. It's too loud.
So the property boundary line to the complainant's location, that presumes there's a complaint other than a police officer riding around saying, you know, I gotta test this music, it's too loud. So how are we gonna identify a complaint and if nobody's complaining, if that's what we change it to?
That's why I thought there, I thought there was more discussion needed on this. I think, I think, I think you've been requested to ask something, to write something that's gonna kind of copy.
My definition of a complaint is somebody who caused the police department to offer complaint about the mute, about the, the sound level. Would be my expectation.
So, so one of the problems.
That could well be the way it comes up, Terry, but it doesn't have to be. This is a maximum sound level period, you know, whether there's a complaint about it or not. I mean, it could be self generated.
If you look at our current book right now, somebody doesn't technically have to complain. If, if there's a hundred and fifty decibel jet engine going on, because somebody's got something going, the cops can drive by and say, hey, that's way too loud. And they don't need to wait until, but by changing it this way, you almost make it to where they can go as loud as they want. There better be a complaint before we do anything.
If I could offer something here, in two thousand six, I do recall this, this ordinance being drew up. It had something to do with a kid playing the drums in his garage and the neighbors were really upset about it. That was what the complainant part came into.
Is that why there's a different?
It doesn't say drums, I'm sure. It's.
No, but there is a different decibel level for residential versus commercial.
Commercial and industrial.
That was why in two thousand six it came to their attention.
I just don't even know why industrial's on the chart. If it's eighty for both, they should just say it, the thing that's off the chart.
I guess I really don't understand what the measurement request is. And, and again, if there's no complainant, you know, and we change it to a complainant's location, we're not gonna have an ordinance that's gonna work. Because we don't have a complaint, but the noise is too loud.
I have a question for Mike. Does, does our police department even have decibel meters? Okay. Do you have a four foot, do you have a four foot pole to hold it on?
Then you gotta go, how do you go to? You gotta go to the property when the lights, the cherries on.
So my recommendation would be that you change the time, and if you want, from May to October for this change, but not change the measurement calculation. Just leave it the way it is in the ordinance.
What specifically, see, and this is another thing we need to talk about. This is, okay, this is, this is actually important. This is important. I, I don't mean to call anybody out, but we had a talk about this before. There's been times that this, this council says, I make that motion. And to my cur, that is not legal. You have to state what the motion is, because here we are, we have.
I did state my motion. He did state his motion.
I'm giving an example. I'm giving an example, because there's been times people have said that and it makes it very confusing what it is. I think the same thing here. What, what was the motion made for? Because there's, there is so many things that wanna get changed here. I don't think all those things were laid out in the motion.
They, they weren't. My, my motion was to put it at the front of Pat's plate.
Okay.
For the next meeting. That was my motion, was just to put that, make that a priority.
My question would be, put what?
The noise ordinance.
The amended noise.
What is the, what is the amended parts?
Well, that's what we're discussing as a council here. Nobody's made that motion yet to, or if we even need a motion or just a discussion. I mean, the way I, I interpret it right now by reading the council is the only one opposed to what we're talking about doing is you, Jason.
I'm not a, and that's where, I'm kinda getting over talk a little bit. I'm not opposed to it in any way, shape, or form. What I'm concerned is that we're pushing it so fast that we're not getting an opportunity to actually look at the, the date, the data and then making sure that residents will have an opportunity to say it. But that's okay. If, if, if we're not, that was my complaint about trying to approve it tonight.
Well, I'm not trying to approve it tonight.
And I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
I made the motion to just make sure that this, because the comment was made that Pat might not have time to get to all the items we put in front of him. I know this is very important to our business owners. I ran a pro-business platform, so I feel a need to support them in any way I can. And I wanted to make sure that this, this doesn't get drug out any longer than what it needs to. And it might not be as important to, to maybe us sitting here at this council, because we don't own a business with the exception of Rich, but to these guys, it's extremely important and it generates a lot of revenue and tax base for the city as a secondary for us, so.
I agree with that, but the other thing that you say that it's important to them, they're in the room right now, right? We don't know what the people that aren't in the room that might be opposed to it. So we have to be cognizant of them as well.
We're not approving anything. I think if a hundred people show up tomorrow or on, on Monday to speak out against it, I'm not saying that I'm not gonna listen to those people.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And, and so the other thing is, though, I wanna make sure that if you're motioning to put it on the thing, that's fine, but I wanna make sure that we're being very clear of what we're telling them that we want him to do. So I think it was relatively clear that you wanna change the, the commercial district from ten to eleven. You wanna put a section in there about the, the May through October to limit the timeframe of it. So that means you almost need two sets of charts. You need the current chart that we have for the outside of those months and then a different set of months will be a different chart. And then we have to change the method of how we're gonna do the measuring.
What is it now currently? Is there months in play? Then why, then why don't we just leave it the way that it is? All year, let's not complicate it. I'm pretty sure, does, does anybody that represents the bar owners have a problem with the all year long? If it's already all year and all we're doing is extending an hour, I say why overcomplicate it? Just leave the text the way it is and change the, I'm, I'm just trying, Pat. I'm trying for you here.
Okay, well, so that makes that, that clears that up a bit.
And so we'll eliminate the May to October. What about the measurement?
The measurement technique.
Do we really need to change it?
I don't believe so.
They're requesting it. I don't know if that's a good idea, because if somebody, like, like the chief just said, if somebody complains and they wanna remain anonymous, technically the cops would have to go to that house, stand where they are with the, with the little sound device at four feet or whatever, and then.
And if they're calling in anonymous, they're not gonna give their address or any of that.
Yeah, that part I don't know. I feel like on the anonymous form, there is a name and number, but it's just not made public. Is that accurate or? Okay, so there is a way that they can make a report completely anonymous.
And I, and I think they presented it in a reasonable way, that at least instead of one person coming up, they achieve consensus among the business owners, sign the petition together. I think the way they presented it to this council is very fair and, and like I said, I, I, I agree again with Commissioner Eunice on this. On my sign, it said pro-business and I, and I have to keep my word, so.
Again, I have no issues with the hour. I have no issues with the timeframe. If it makes it easier, you know, here's the thing. Is it really a big deal to have, there's not gonna be outdoor bands happening in December unless it, well, I don't know, last year was actually a pretty warm December. You never know. You never know.
Well, you know what, Mayor? The other thing that I would, that I would, that I would throw on the table is we're, we're gonna start talking about special events, right? So it puts us in a precarious position or it makes us look like hypocrites if we don't take care of our existing businesses, but then we wanna go a few items down and start talking about special events, so. In all fairness, I'm just trying to look out for this council right now.
I didn't get that far. I had, I had stuff I was gonna talk about, because in, in Fun Fest on city property, we do already run to eleven. You know, so, but I didn't get a chance to talk about that. I had people making motions already. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we're, you, you have a direction for the ten PM to eleven? Period.
No May to October.
No May to October. What do we wanna do? Do we wanna, do we not wanna support their recommendation of the, the, how we do the measurement? I do think that that could be a problem with being intrusive.
I propose we establish a footage then. If you don't wanna go to someone and ask for.
I thought I read something about a fifty foot thing or something. Maybe it's because you told me that.
But I can't believe I just made it up.
Yeah, I don't know.
I would propose at least fifty feet from the property line. So then if someone calls in unanimously.
And, and, and you know what, Rich? I, I think Terry hit it on the head. We don't get many complaints, so if, if that's the case, I don't think this is really, it shouldn't be a sticking.
Should we leave that the way it is? Is that, you're good with that, the motion you made?
Well, I wanna be.
We'll leave the measuring the way it is, but we'll change the thing to year round, commercial district only to eleven PM. That should be a lot less.
So we'll have two new tables, one for residential and industrial and one for commercial.
Yep, and that's all, yeah, that's.
Unless you wanna change the time on all of them.
No, I think that's all you have to do, right? Just Table A and take out, take out commercial and then Table, or B or whatever. And then you would just have commercial with the same everything and just a different timeframe. Is everybody good with that?
Do we need to do another motion then?
Well, we don't, I don't think we really need to do, as long as it's consensus, the actual. The official, the official motion is what we're gonna approve or something.
If we need official action, that's all I'm asking.
I'm just, I was just trying to say, I can't stop you from making motions. Okay, any other discussion on that topic before we move on? We're gonna get that on the next July fifth meeting. Yes, so, so what, what is, what is going to be on the next agenda will be a formal approval of it and it will be changed as of right now what's gonna be written. The plan is to go from ten to eleven PM and there won't be a month thing on there. It'll be all year round. That'll just be for commercial districts, but they're not, we're, don't think we're gonna change the, the measuring method, because that would cause some other issues.
We can come back to that.
We can always come back.
We can revisit that if we need to, but let's keep in mind, I saw a list of the complaints.
There's been nine.
They're not existent. I mean, so why mess with it if we don't, unless, I mean, I don't think it's a problem. I really don't. I think you'll be fine.
Did you have a comment?
How loud can you be at midnight? One AM? I'm, I'm naive on that.
Commercial district sixty-five decibels, residential fifty-five decibels. I don't know if that helps anything. That's a number. Okay, any other questions on that topic at all? Alright.
I, I think just hearing Mike talk, there, it's just.
It's on your letter for your petition. Your petition was heard. You had three requests in here. What's that?
Which one was that, Woody?
May through.
No, we're doing it all year.
Correct. Well, it's, it's, that, that request was a request, so instead of putting it in, it's been expanded. Okay, yeah, yep.
But till eleven o'clock at night on weekends.
And I mean, the beauty about the ordinance in your council here is we can always adjust anything. You know what I'm saying? If, if we go a year and it's, it's been fantastic and there's not one complaint and there's, there's a, there's a means that people wanna go to eleven thirty or something like that, we can adjust that again. You know, I don't.
Shut down us last Saturday at ten o'clock for a benefit for council chair.
I, I understand that. I, I, I didn't hear your question, I'm sorry. Because that change, number one, it changes the ordinance, and it would change it based on the fact that people would not be able to make anonymous complaints, which changes up everything else then.
We can get this done at the next meeting as it stands. We have to wait longer to do it, to change the whole thing. Pat's got four or five days. If you can have it done by July fifth at seven thirty.
I think the way we're looking to do it, all he has to do is modify a table. That's it.
It'll be very easy for me to do.
That's it. I don't, does it even say anything else? Because it, does it mention the time anywhere else in here?
I don't know. I'll have to read it on Jason, but I don't think so.
I think it's just on the, it's just on the table. If it's just in the table, this is an easy fix. Okay, any other questions on that topic before we move on? Alright.
So we're, Mike got one.
Okay, go ahead.
So what we're, what we're agreeing on is that he would have this at the meeting on the fifth, priority one, correct?
That was the, that was the motion.
Well, I don't even know if that, it, it doesn't have to be priority one on the agenda. I just wanted to make sure that Pat had time to get to it. Yes, for Pat.
For Pat, it would be priority one.
See, I don't know if that was defined. I think it's priority one. That's the first item. That's the first item. That's the motion. That's the motion.
Before the, before the pledge?
That's the, yeah. Oh, you got me on that one. Okay, alright. Any other topics in that before I move on? I know it's a, I don't think it was a hot topic. I just want to make sure we're doing it right. That's, that's my, that's my concern. Okay. Um, the next ones, nine, ten, and twelve, all kind of relate, but we can take them in order. We can talk about them all at the same time. Number nine is discuss and possibly modify the future of event coordination efforts for the city of Oglesby. Ten is discuss, place, on file, and or possibly approve assistant event coordinator ordinance, and twelve, discuss and possibly approve formation of a formal event committee. So, um, and I see that, uh, Tony has submitted a couple things here in regards to, where was it?
Well, the only thing I submitted was a flow chart there, and I was just, I figured once we started discussion, I can kind of give an explanation of how things would work, how things would work there.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll start it, I'll start it off talking about event coordination here. Um, we have a policy that was approved back in twenty-twenty-one, right? That, that sets three specific people as event coordinators. Here's, here's the thing. One of those is no longer an employee to the city. Another one gave their letter of resignation from that committee on, uh, Thursday morning, bef, uh, previous Thursday morning, and then another one is an active, uh, city employee. I will say, with, with the, with the leaving of one of the, the people, one of those named people there, I'll just, I'll just put the name out there, Erin Quick. I thought she did a fantastic job, because usually with Fun Fest, it's a huge massive event that we have in the city. Um, and, and a lot of the things are divided between three people for coordination. You have all the events on the, the stuff on the ground at the parks, and then you have a lot of coordination, a lot of contract stuff, a lot of advertising stuff, and Erin Quick had to take over all of those things, and I thought she did a fantastic job. She really did. However, our, our current ordinance has, has three people assigned to it, and only, and two of them are, are no longer functioning in that role. I, I think we need to discuss about a change of how we do event coordination. I would recommend that we go back to something how we had it in the past before this, to where departmental, again, we, we all work as a team when we get this stuff done, right? But we have department, departmental responsibilities that are always involved with stuff, right? And at some point in time, every single department is involved. The security, the safety, the most amount of employees down there is the police, right? We have, um, the street department is doing the part, setting up the parking lots. They're, they're pulling out any people that get stuck if there was a muddy year, which wasn't this year at all. Um, we have the electric department that is, that is doing up the, the temporary power for all the, the different vendors that come in and everything like that. We have a lot of coordination with the finances and the, and the, uh, the band contracts with the, uh, the finance department. There, there, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts. So, I think we should go back to some kind of idea that, that we're, we're all in this together, and that we have departmental roles and responsibilities. I don't have a problem if we assign a specific event coordinator for each different event that we have throughout the year. But again, I'd like to open up the conversation, what people think they'd like to do with it.
I'd like to get rid of this.
Okay, what would you prefer to do in its place?
I think everyone can help out as opposed to how that worked out there. I don't think it worked out as it was intended to work out. I feel that the, the taxpayers kind of got screwed.
I don't know if I'll go quite that far, but I will say, I agree with the first part that you said, because, uh, if you go back to the minutes when we approved this, I even stated, hey, I was very excited. I guess this means that these individuals, it's, it's requiring them to stay on board for, for an event. They won't be taking vacation over that. And then I, I want to say within the first year of it, there were certain employees that were taking vacation across that. And my, my concern was, why are we paying them two thousand dollars extra on top of it if they're taking vacation over the events and things like that? So that, that is a concern, so it relates to your, your former colleague there.
So when someone quits, like a former employee here, did they give back part of that money? Because they're no longer doing that job. They were paid to do that job upfront. That's my concern with paying them two thousand dollars July first, and then they bail on us, and here we are standing here with empty pockets while they're off on an order.
I mean, it's, it's an ordinance and a contract, so I mean...
I suggest we get rid of this ordinance, end this contract, or however you want to label it.
Okay.
I don't agree with it.
So, what would have to happen? Is that like a rescind? It would be rescinded?
We, we could rescind, we could vote to rescind one. If we don't have, if we had one that we were going to put in its place, we could vote just a new one in to replace it, but if we don't have one in, we could rescind it. But before we do that, I'd like to talk about what are our options, because this is our current plan of attack right now. How else would, how would you, so I'd say you're the one that recommended rescind.
How did we get through, how did we just get through the last event? This didn't, this didn't help us.
Well, we, I, I would say that, that we had one member on there that did a vast majority of work on there.
I agree.
And all credit to her. She is, her name is listed in there, and she did do that.
Becky helped a lot on that as well, and I think everyone else kind of joined in a little bit, even on the fly.
I'll wait till I'm recognized here, in accordance with Robert's rules of order.
Please, please.
So, what I did here was I put together for you guys an event management flow chart, and the way that I took this was what they do in pub, in the public sector, um, like in the fire department, or if you have a large-scale emergency, and it delineates exactly whose responsibilities are what. And if you notice, I put the city council at the very top with all of our departments, and then specified what it is that the person actually would have oversight of. So, obviously Commissioner Baldridge has parks, so park usage and event electrical logistics. If there's any question, he would be the final say on that kind of stuff. Overall, the, the money handling part of it would be mine, and then event security, if there was a fight or something broke out, obviously the police would handle it, but it's, I think it's understood that the commissioner of public safety would have the final say-so on what the procedure or what's to be done there. So this kind of lays it out for us and gives us something going forward. I thought, you know, the way that we handled it that Sunday night, everybody kind of had a good time, and then everybody was kind of on, on the same wavelength, and we were all in agreement about, you know, how we were doing things there. So, I, I, I think this will just help spell it out.
Can you, uh, explain more of the overall event planning?
Overall event planning, because, okay, obviously a lot of it went through the clerk's office, and, and, you know, in the past, even before our time here, Becky had a great working knowledge of this event. So, I think for us as a city and for this council, it, it's a total asset. And I'm not just saying that because she's my department head. I'm just saying that because we may not have had that had it have been somebody else. So I think as far as the, the, the quarterbacking part of it and keeping it organized, I think that's, that's what I'm saying by the overall event planning.
I just feel that some others may think that that means it's theirs, it's their final say, your suggestion.
No, the guys on top, it's their final say. That's why I laid it out this way, is that if there's something that becomes at an impasse, I think it's only fair that us, us up here work through it.
I, so, I, I like what you have here. I, I think it's similar to what I was saying, that it goes back to departmental responsibilities, that everybody has roles to do and everything like that. I don't know if I like the idea that it says overall event planning under commissioner of accounts and finance, because I read that and I think that, oh, I guess the commissioner of accounts and finance does all the events in the city, and I don't think that's the case at all.
Well, I'm, I'm open to new terminology there if you have something you want to offer.
Sure. I would like to think that if we're doing events in the city, um, if there's some kind of event that the entire council, if there's a change, like, for example, if we were going to change how we did Fun Fest for a drastic turn or something very different, I would like that to be an overall council agreement, to something like that. So to me, when I think of overall event planning, I think the council. Um, I do think though, if you're talking, I, I do see you have public relations for the mayor. I do think if there is something that's going on, unless it's safety, if there's safety, like there's ever an incident, commission of public safety takes over everything. I don't care what it is, that, they, you need an incident command, just like you got there. But if there's an issue with, uh, um, electrical power goes out for all the stuff right there, right? I don't think any other, uh, department head or something like that's going to be coming in to whatever, you know, I mean, we, we divvy that up. I would rather have it to where, um, overall, outside of the actual event, that's, that's the council. The council sets the overall event before, but once the event starts, if there's anything that has to change during the event, and you guys might think differently, I think that should be the mayor, because the mayor's got to be the face of that.
I, I, that's why I put public relations and assistance to each commissioner group as requested, because it's reflective of how the form of government that we're in is working. It keeps everybody in their lanes. It, I think it, it creates for a successful pattern here.
And I, and I completely agree with that. Like, for example, if there was some kind of major electrical item, and, and Rich isn't available and we need to do something, you know, same as what we have in our ordinance, is mayor would step in and say, yeah, go ahead and do that, or, or whatever we got to do. I just don't know if I like the term overall event planning, because it makes it seem to me that the other council members don't have a part to play.
No, all I'm saying is that's the organizational point of, okay, if this is what we agreed to, okay, this is, this is where it'll be formalized. I think you got...
Go ahead, please.
Can I make a suggestion? I've been very critical of the events. Why don't we hold off on this specifically until we talk more about what direction we're going with our event planning? Because that's going to, this is going to be fluid until that, we figure that out, right?
Yeah, so I can talk about a couple other things here that, that's on the thing. So I put a thing in there that has, um, assistant event coordinator. Now that is the same, I don't think there's much language I changed the last time. I think some of you guys were against that, but I wanted to point out that, I don't want to, I don't want to try to talk about negative things, but there is a lot of work, I don't want to focus it just on Fun Fest, because we have more events than just Fun Fest. But Fun Fest is such a big deal for a city of our size. It has a massive drain on resources. There is, the clerk's office especially, and you know that first...
Oh, hundred percent.
So, you know, we even had something, again, I'm not saying if we would have had some kind of assistant to help during the day to alleviate those things, we would have caught the voicemail for Charis, whatever. I mean, their timing on, on, and, and location of where they sent that information was, they, they could have been better at that. I didn't like the fact that they left a voicemail on a Friday during our Fun Fest, while we got stuff going on. But my point is, I think we need to have some kind of assistance, uh, especially during the workday when things are going on. So I, I still think that's, there's value there, uh, in, in doing that. We have, plus we pay people, uh, you know, time and a half and double time on Sundays that are down there working. Granted, I shouldn't be using that as the only example, because Sunday is the only event day that we have for Fun Fest. But I do think having an assistant that, that your various event coordinators could use during event would have some value.
I think some other events could have been planned for Sundays, but due to that fact, they haven't been, because we're putting in the double time.
I don't, I'm trying to think. I don't know if we ever had any events planned on a Sunday in the past.
We haven't. They've avoided doing it on Sunday because our volunteers are paid.
For some reason, for some reason, I have a feeling that at some point in time, the Christmas thing was on a Sunday, but I don't know why I'm thinking that.
Are we talking about the assistant event coordinator right now?
Yeah.
I've got a totally different concern, and I guess I need to know how many hours we think this person is going to work, because I know there's provision in here for that person to go potentially over a thousand hours in a calendar year, but let's just say we go to that nine ninety, so we don't have to pay IMRF. We're paying twenty thousand dollars to this person, where our out-of-pocket right now for our event coordinators is only six thousand, and even if you roll in the overtime we're paying for these events, we're going to, we're not going to be anywhere close to twenty thousand dollars. That's a lot of coin.
Well, that, that language, I just copied it from the, uh, that's why this looks so goofy. This is actually copied from our, uh, that's why you see the green for assistant event coordinator everywhere. That was basically the economic developer one that we currently have. That's where that came from.
Okay.
So, I'm not expecting that we should have to give that many hours to somebody necessarily, but my point is if we were to pay them fifteen to twenty dollars an hour to offset some of the stuff that our employees are doing, we're probably saving money, especially if it's taking away the time.
I don't disagree with that. I was just concerned if we were going to have them work that many hours. I thought that was excessive.
So what, what is your vision? Like, what would, what would it look like? How would, how would this person report to work? Um, what would they, their duties be? Who would they report to? How would, how would, how do you see it? How would you, how are you proposing it?
That is, that is a good question. So, um, my thoughts are, so like, for example, up to Fun Fest, we had employees stuffing bags. You know, like, like bags for the kids and stuff like that for, for the, it wasn't party in the park, it was a red, white, and bike, for example. So I mean, that eats up work time and stuff like that. I'd rather have hours that you can bring in a part-time employee, and then whoever that event coordinator in that role is, whether it's in the, um, a lot of it, I'll be honest, would be in, be assistance for your office. Hey, I need you to call these vendors. Can you go through these vendors and see what we have for this? Can you, um, can you work on all these, I mean, we probably had the donation letters, probably took like three, four hours of, of, of Erin's time alone right there. I mean, that'd be time that, that you would have somebody else do that, that would put time and resources back into your department, for example. So I don't know. Are we talking a hundred hours a year that this could be useful? I don't know. I don't know.
That's a much easier pill to swallow then.
That's what I'm saying. I, I don't know if there's a reason for us to have.
I guess one of my concerns is, who does, number one, like Tony was saying, who does this person report to? But I also think that our city clerk has a ton of experience as it pertains to the space, and has been in that role for a long time. So, number one, we don't pay her overtime. We can give her comp time or flex time or whatever we want to do for the extra hours worked.
We do pay her overtime.
You do pay her overtime to be there?
She has.
I didn't know we did, okay. I, I didn't know we did for special, my bad.
She has to, yeah, she has to go over, she has the same one, name or hours as the chief of police. She has to go over eighty-four hours in a two-week period. So generally, it's written, because here, here we are today.
Our, our chief police does not...
He does not.
He does not get overtime, no.
But she does if she goes over eighty-four hours in two weeks.
I didn't, I didn't realize that.
So, the thought process is, because that's how her salary was kind of based on, she has kind of a benefit any year, any month that we, any two-week period, we don't go over eighty-four dollars, eighty-four hours. If she works exactly eighty-four, she made thirty-one dollars an hour, but then it goes a little higher. Let's say she made only, worked eighty. So it's a little bit higher. So it's, that's the advantage. But we have somebody that's a responsible individual in that seat, so it makes it pretty easy for us. So.
I, and I would say from my perspective, from a leadership position, I, I, I'm putting her in a position to be successful. You saw how the event was carried out. You saw how organized she was with a little bit of time. So for me, I'm going to advocate for it, and like I said, not just because it's my department head, I'm going to advocate for it because the person's competent to do the job. So before we bring somebody in from the outside, I want to know that that's where the leadership starts.
Well, that's why it says assistant.
Right, right.
There's, there's no way I want to bring a part-time person in there.
No, no, I'm not personally. I got you.
Yeah. To me, it's to help offset some of the concerns that we have. There is another thing I wanted to bring up, and it's not on here, it's not on the agenda necessarily, but it relates, and Becky and I had this conversation a little bit ago, so I thought maybe this would be the opportunity to talk about it. Whether we have it as this, or we go to something else, I have thought about this in the past, and this is probably more of a conversation after everybody's been in six months, but there is a discussion that we should have at some point if we want to have an administrative assistant to the council. There is a lot of things that the clerk's office kind of gets overwhelmed with, that we as council members, whether it's mayor, whether it's whoever, that we're reaching out to the clerk's office to say, hey, can you get me a copy of this ordinance? Can you look up, when's the last time we approved this? When's the last time we've done that? And there's a lot of hours eaten up out of their day.
You won't get any resistance out of me. I know how busy they are in there.
Wondering is, if having this, because that was actually a recommendation from, from Becky, and I thought about it in the last council, believe it or not, too. But if that's something we wanted to do, we can make an administr, and then that could be a side role of, of assistance for event coordination.
I, I think, yeah.
That would, that would...
Even somebody that, like, if you, like, for example, let's say we all got, because we all have administrative questions, right? One of the things that's terrible about the, uh, the city clerk is the city clerk really does get abused, because they're the fallback for everything, right? They, they, they get all of our stuff together when it comes for a, a council meeting. They, they look up any past ordinance issues that we might have had, or a question on something that we approved. They look up all the bills that we, that any department has a question on. Um, and then right now, especially the, the current economic developer on top of it, it, it's overwhelming. So I don't know if that's something we wanted to think about. So I don't know if that's something we wanted to think about, i- is in addition to this. Right now, my only focus was event coordination efforts to help with that. Um, but if it's something we wanna think about, I, I think not only would it save some time and money, but it would make your life easier probably in the department.
I, I think that's a little easier for, for me and my position here to swallow. I, I might advocate for that, because if it takes the heat off of that office, and we can couple a bunch of different responsibilities to one person, then I think we're talking business here. I think it's something that is more palatable.
Then it gets closer to what Terry's concern was.
Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I guess, I wonder, starting out, if we could have that be a part-time position, even permanent part-time, like, three days a week, instead of going to a forty-hour-a-week position. And we could even, I don't know what the hour breakout is, Pat, for offering benefits on permanent part-time. I do know next year, we're gonna have to start offering, in twenty twenty-four, offering, um, paid time off to our part-time employees anyway. But at what, at what threshold do we have to offer health insurance or health benefits to?
I think Rich is right, I mean, it's controlled by whatever your policy says, but I think a thousand hours is a pretty good guess.
Okay, well, that's certainly, certainly over a thousand hours, so it would be a benefit position. But it, I still think, starting out, I wonder if we could do a few days a week, and if it evolves into more, we can always pivot or adjust, and, and, and put them in there five days a week and make it a forty-hour-a-week position.
Am I too soon in asking that? What do you guys think about the amount of administration stuff that you usually have to ask for at the clerk's office?
I think you need help, you could always use help there.
I, I know there's a ton of things I'm always asking for to look up or something like that, and I don't need it usually right away. You know what I mean? But I, I do need it before our next council meeting or something like that, because we're putting some information together.
Would that work for you, Jason, three days a week, you think? Do you think that'd be acceptable?
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I would, I'm only tying this in because it, it relates in a way, uh, to, to where it wasn't on the thing. I wasn't really prepared to talk about it, I'm surprised you guys are actually.
Well, I think that everybody sees how overwhelmed that clerk's office can get, especially when we're getting close to a council meeting, and.
Oh, Fridays are fun over there, let me tell you.
And, and this is above and beyond.
How about, how about, I, I'll rewrite that thing, call it Administrative Assistant to the Council, something like that. And then, um, cause it'll work for all the council members, anytime we need administrative items or something like that done. And then in one of the job descriptions things, I can put in there, uh, will assist, uh, assist event coordination as requested, something like that.
Yeah, and if we start off with a part-time person, that'll give us a chance to make sure that we have the right person on board, and, and once we all feel that we have the right person and, and we're confident of it, then we can start talking about a benefits-paid person. But I think starting off part-time is probably more responsible.
Well, but I think what you're hearing here from Pat, though, Tony, just to be clear, I think if we went three days a week, eight-hour days, I think what he's saying is, we would have to offer.
You're already over.
Right.
You have to average, it's, it's about sixteen hours that you average, or something like that, so you almost need to have.
Can we cut it down to two days a week, then?
That's a, I don't know, that's, that's something we can discuss.
Or half-days?
Or half-days.
Would that be helpful?
You're gonna cut down on, on your pool to choose from, obviously.
I would recommend you do something like three days a week, four hours a day.
Okay.
Something like that to help out with whatever we need. And then, uh, and the, the reason for that is, cause that means it averages twelve-week. I think if I remember right, it was like sixteen point six would be average to hit the one thousand.
Let's keep in mind also, who's gonna come in to do that? Like, who's gonna take four hours out of days, three days a week to come in here?
Well, you never know, there could be, there could be somebody that's in a retired, uh, you know.
Yeah, or.
Semi-retired, that, that, that had some good office management.
Somebody with kids in school, where they, while the kids.
I hope we can get it.
Six hundred and twenty-four, is what I could get that.
Yeah.
For what, is that?
For, uh, three days a week, Mike, Derek.
Si- yeah, six twenty-four is what I came up with.
Four hours a day?
For twelve hours, for twelve hours a week, three, four-hour days.
Yep. And then that gives us the flex room to add for, um, event coordination assistance, if there's anything more extra they wanna do to get paid for that. So how about I, I'll, I'll take a stab at writing something new up that maybe covers both things, and then we can discuss it from there. Does that sound good?
That sounds good.
Okay, so that's the.
During Fun Fest, if we go up to maybe, you know, even if we're working a, a thirty-two-hour-a-week, you know.
For that one week.
Coming, leading up to the festival, we're still well below that thousand-hour threshold.
Absolutely.
And in the fall, things may slow down, where, okay, hey, holidays, you know, you take the time off, and then you put it back in. I'm just saying, Rich, maybe, maybe we find somebody with kids that are in school, that they still wanna work, and may have these qualifications, where, okay, hey, at two o'clock, I gotta get outta here to go get the kids, may, maybe we'll find some.
That's true.
I hope, I, I would love it.
So you guys on board with me taking a, a stab at rewriting number ten, and then presenting that again in a future meeting, we'll talk about it?
Do we need like motions or official action?
No, I don't have anything to present you, but what I have right now is event co- is event.
Is her skirt, I know what you want there, okay.
Um, we'll make it work.
Okay, so then the other ones were, uh, since we're talking about events yet, Formal Event Committee. So, I, I know we talked about this last time, I did not put something together that was very specific. So, if you take a look in there, I, I made it a little more specific. I know Terry, and I believe Rich, had some concerns that this would impede onto, uh, like, We Are Oglesby. And, and that's why I feel like there was some confusion there, because that wasn't my goal at all with that.
That's what we're looking at, right?
Yeah, yeah. This is something I'd like to put together. Whether we approve something that gets this detailed, there's only a couple, uh, things in our ordinance book that actually goes over, like, what the agenda could be. So I put one in there that has a sample agenda. So as you can see, my thoughts are, you get an event committee together, um, they read petitions or communications to the event committee. The first thing they do is review of most recent city events as last meeting, feedback via committee, public comment, recommendations to event coordinators. Next item, review on upcoming city events, feedback via committee, public comment on upcoming events, recommendation to event coordinators. And then the most important one, and this is where I think we were hurting, discussion on volunteer support needed for upcoming events, and then volunteer coordination efforts needed for upcoming events. We, I know Rich and I talked about this today, one of the things that we're struggling with is, and maybe it's just the time, times have changed with people, right? We have a lot less people that wanna volunteer to be part of things and do things like that, but everybody wants to have great events. I really think having an event committee, and one of their key goals is, is to, to find people that recruit people for, for events that we have throughout the city. Here's the thing, if we wanted to, we could probably have two hundred people, if we asked, hey, who would like to be on event committee, where you just tell us about your complaints about any events that we have in the city for anything. We'd have two hundred people wanna be on that board. But, we can set people, I'd like to set people that is, uh, you know, as I said, demographic. If you look at the beginning, it talks about the demographics of everybody. I wanna have people that are, uh, older, younger, married, single, people with kids, people without kids, people with little kids, people with teenage kids. I wanna have a wide diversity of, of people for this board, and I wanna get people that are motivated, that wanna volunteer, and find other people to volunteer.
Can I make a suggestion? What about if you did, um, like, a semi-annual community event meeting, where they can come up and offer suggestions? Or I'll even go a step further, maybe, um, they can send out a survey or something with the, with the bills out of the clerk's office, because I think that, that way you might get more input. If you try to put a committee together, it's gonna be the same old, same old, where this one doesn't show, and then it's only one or two people, not a lot of good discussion was had. That would, I would suggest those, I mean.
So my understanding of, there used to be an existence of something like this in the past.
Hmm.
And it was consistent of the event coordinators, I can't remember the details of it. But what happened is, they'd make, they'd make a public thing, and then people would come, and it was just, and the reason they wanted to get rid of it is because they thought all they did was complain.
Mm-hmm.
And, and my thoughts are, it's probably because we didn't have an agenda together to try to handle some of those things. That's, that's my thing. So having it, that we recognize a group of people to try to solve some of those things, has a lot more value than just having a single public meeting. Because now people are engaged, they know that they're, they're part of something, they know that they're, they have direct input into the different events. And, and if we get people, I don't want people that are just gonna complain, I want people that's gonna find a solution for things, right? Is what I'm, is what I'm thinking. What's your thoughts on that? I know you guys had some concerns that you thought this was gonna counter with We Are Oglesby, and I don't think it really does.
No, I, I don't think that was our concern. I think our concern was that we don't want them working against each other. So we feel like there has to be communications from both sides, at least that was my concern. So, the example I said is that if your event committee is doing all this legwork on a three-on-three basketball tournament, and trying to get all that together, and then you have We Are Oglesby, unbannounced to the event committee, is also working on the exact same thing, I think that's a waste of resources and people's time. So I wanna make sure there's some way to communicate between the two groups, so we're not spinning our wheels, if you will.
Well, the easiest way for that is, uh, why don't we put a member of that.
That's what I, that's what we mentioned.
Right on there. I mean, it, right, the way I have it written is Parks and Recreation Director, Economic Developer.
Did you do this before June eighteen?
Why before June eighteen?
Well, I would say that that guy's probably not gonna be on another event committee if he just resigned from one.
Well, the, the, he didn't resign from being on event committee, he resigned from being event coordinator, as we have it written here. So it's different. So, um, um, so my thoughts is, yeah, you, you, you simply put somebody on that board is one of those, is one of those slots.
That's what we kinda talked about, that was my concern.
But I don't know if they would work against it, because here's the thing, if you look at it, it's not like the event committee is going to force any new events. The only thing they have, if you look at the very last thing at the end, recommendations to event coordinators on potential any new events, if any. And then recommendations on reports to city council, if any. So that way, all they're doing is giving, they're, they're getting recommendations and stuff like that, cause I would love to expand all the events that we do in the city, right? I wanna find more things that we can do. Obviously, we can't have probably another Fun Fest thing, it's such an exhaustive thing that we do. But, but there is a lot of other events that we do that are simply one-day events, or four-hour events and stuff like that. And I'd, I'd like to create more throughout the year that we can do different things with. And have a bigger representation of, of all age groups that we have. Thoughts?
I threw you mine, I gave you two of them, so.
Okay, and I think it's, what else do everybody think? Not for it?
I, I've, I've worked with We Are Oglesby, I've seen the volunteers that popped up at the beginning, and I've seen it dwindle down so quickly that a lot of the events and things that they had had planned, don't have anybody to help. So, if our town has this already, and people, I don't know what more they could do to market it, and tell the citizens of Oglesby that, hey, there's time for you to volunteer, that we're looking for someone to help. And there's really nobody stepping forward to help. I've looked around many times, and you see the same faces.
So I know we talked about this today, and, and we have a run, the time's always runs on us.
You're one twen- hour and twenty-one.
Yeah, so here's, thank you.
My pleasure.
Here's my, as I, as I explained to you, here's my thoughts when it comes to volunteers and how we are. You know, the family dynamic and everything is different nowadays. Um, I know a lot of times people, I think what they think about is, um, they say, hey, I care about X event, that's important to me, I wanna do that. I don't care about Y, right? Number, whatever that is. So, then when, then when they don't care about number Y, they don't get involved with it, then they're upset why nobody cares about their event. I think if we had an event committee that was equally concerned about all events that we have in the city, we can help with that. Like, for example, didn't we find out today that, uh, I guess the state tournament for softball is, is not happening now?
There's a perfect example, you have a committee already there.
Well, that was, so, so that's, so that's my point. That committee that they have is softball people. They are having a hard time getting people from outside their realm. Having an event committee in the city that looks at all that stuff to help with people, I think could.
Who more do you think would wanna be associated with the softball field than the softball people?
I, I, I know, but they don't have enough, they, that's what I'm saying. Other entities need to support other entities to make sure we have a good community here. I think that's one of the things we need to push, and I think an event committee like this could help in that endeavor. I could be wrong. I'm trying to believe in the goodwill of people, that they wanna do good things.
I, I'll just say that you're seeing it in emergency services, uh, everywhere. You can't get volunteers to do anything anymore, and it's nothing to do with cities, you know, with, with what it is. It's just, people are wired differently nowadays, and everything's dying and going paid, because they're just not out there, and it's unfortunate. We grew up in a different era, yeah.
That's, that's why I took so much time listing everybody's name off at the la- because it was so important. We, if we didn't have multiple people volunteering for things, we couldn't have done Fun Fest. That's why it's so important. And I think we need to recognize those that do, and try to bring others on.
The spirit of what you're talking about is, is excellent, in concept. In theory, I, I agree with Commissioner Baldridge, it's, it's very, it's very difficult, so.
So how do you think we can get the theory to concept a little better then?
If I knew, I would've argued.
Yeah, we, we probably wouldn't be sitting here.
There'd be other towns calling us.
Well, this is, this is my option, from concept to theory. Do you guys have a different one, or a better one?
I offered you two, so I'm, I'm.
The problem is, I think we had something similar to that before, where we had a public meeting, where we did, we did that, and, and.
What about sending something out with the, with the bills? I mean, that doesn't really cost anything, and I think at least it can give us kind of a, a feel as to what the public wants. I'm sure we'll get something back, I mean.
Or just ask for volunteers, how many people would be willing to volunteer at all?
I mean, it doesn't, I'm not attaching a cost to it, so.
I, well, here's the thing, when it came to, so like for Fun Fest, for example. And that's the thing, I wanna have something more that's just, than just Fun Fest. We have a lot of other things that we wanna have going in the city.
I can tell you, in one of our next meetings, I am, when it comes to commissioners' reports, part of what I'm gonna be doing with my department-wide meeting is, uh, bringing back to the council, um, what was constructive, what worked out well, that we saw, and what we would suggest changing in the future, so that we have something constructive to work with. That's part of what I do from, you know, the, the whole department-wide thing.
So if you look at, uh, three, that is the same thing, but it's, it's, it's engaging the citizens to do that, too. So what you're talking about is very important, because you're looking at your departments and stuff. They're the people that have the boots on the ground, they're the most important people to, to find this information out from. But I, I do think that it's important to have a public means to do that, and getting people involved. If I'm the, if I'm the only one that believes that, then that means I'm the only one that believes that.
Should we, should we go on to the next thing?
I guess we're going on to the next.
In this period of time here?
All right, nobody's interested in the event committee, we'll move on. Uh, so as far as.
In all fairness, I never said I wasn't interested in it, I just think that you're gonna have a very, you're gonna be very hard-pressed to find people to volunteer for it.
That's a tough.
I think that's what the whole council is, is relating to, Jason, I don't think anybody's against it, we'd love to see it come to fruition.
I have five people.
Okay, well, so be it.
Okay, well, I need to establish a formal event committee, though. I have five.
Why exactly do we need anything formal? If they're willing to volunteer, where have they been? I mean, if someone's, if someone has that in their heart, they're willing to step up and volunteer for something.
Pat, what's your thoughts on that? If we were to have something that's an ad hoc one, that we don't put necessarily on the books, can we do that, to where I have an event committee of people that, that's not necessarily formalized?
I think you can.
Cause I thought there was some kind of rule about putting people together, talking about city business, if they're not on some kind of committee.
Yeah, I don't think there is, um.
Becky, you remember having, us having that conversation?
Officials, so we don't have, um, Open Meetings Act problems, or anything, I don't think.
I think if you do.
If you formalize the committee, then we.
Then we have an open meetings.
I thought there was something about that, cause I couldn't do that. Remember we were talking about that? Do you remember that conversation?
I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine.
I'm sure you have many conversations in the clerk's office about Fun Fest, that, you know.
So are you saying that you would like me to try to do this, but with an ad hoc committee first, so without something formalized?
Let's see, first of all, if they're not.
Maybe try counties, uh, build the stuffers and see if you can.
The survey would be a nice one, cause that can be done fairly quickly, and that, that would provide us some information. If you have people that are willing to volunteer, I think with our flow chart here that I provided you, we can, we can revisit this and have something to work with.
I don't wanna be mean to you, do you wanna, do you wanna do a survey? Do you wanna head, head a survey? Cause I did it twice.
I have, I have every confidence that our office can send a survey with the bills, and if we get something back, that's great.
I did a survey for Setica Square, that was crazy, and then I did a survey for the, uh, parking, uh, for the one-way, for the parking on one side of the streets here. Amazing what you get back. Amazing what you get back, and it's an incredible time-consuming effort.
I don't think you so much need a survey, perhaps just a paper to send them to show that they're willing to volunteer, and send it back, or let us, let somehow let us know that these people are willing to step up and volunteer. Cause I don't know if they're not.
Let me ask some, would it be wrong to even ask the other committees how they feel about?
Which committee would you ask about volunteers?
Planning committee.
About volunteers?
No, about, um, Summer Fest.
You mean making them dual roles?
General information, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, general information. Just, you know, you could ask them, what do you, what's this board feel about this?
So, so the problem is, with our formal boards, they have specific roles and functions and stuff like that. So it'd be hard to put the plan commission together, cause they, they come together to talk about, like, the Plan Development Code, or text amendments to it, or things like that. Uh, you know, your zoning board would, would come and look at, would be variances and stuff like that. So it'd be a little tough to get them together for very specific things, because they are Open Meetings Acts, when, when you have these, that they have to have very specialized agendas and stuff. Greg, do you have something constructive you'd like to add to it?
The BB gun club downstairs and the, the softball things, are those considered those events? Who's in charge of them?
So those are not city-sponsored events, so you're talking about like the baseball board or the softball board?
Yeah.
Those are, those are separate. Those are not associated with the, the city themselves. We maintain the parks for them and everything, but they're not, they're not city, uh, if, we don't appoint them, or anything like that. We don't maintain their meetings, or dictate anything like that to them at all. So, okay, well, I'll tell you what, let's, let's put a pin in it, if we wanna do a survey thing, I'm all for that. I will tell you, it is, it always ends up being a bigger task than you can imagine. It is surprising when you get back open-ended answers.
I think we'll be okay with that. And if they're open-ended, that's fine, too, we'll work with what we got.
I look forward to it.
It's an opportunity to give somebody a voice, right?
It is, it is, absolutely. Okay, I, I think a lot of the other, so is there anything else we wanna talk about event? Again, what's your thoughts on this flow chart here? I like the flow chart, I'd not. Again, what's your thoughts on this flow chart here? I like the flow chart. I'm not a big fan of overall event.
Yeah, here, I've got a, here, how about, how about this, if we're going to do terminology? Event organization or mobilization? I don't know. Gentlemen, I'm open for whatever you guys want to suggest there. I just think she kind of runs the point on a lot of it. So you don't want anything competing there. I just think it's a good center point.
I would prefer, if there was something up here that said, "The council. The council's in charge of overall event planning."
Well, that would be the top gray boxes. They're at the top of the food chain there.
Yeah.
And everybody's, everybody's roles are kind of laid out, where you're kind of the floating guy, where you go and you start giving the assistance where it's needed at a given time, and everybody else has their lanes, and they work in their lanes.
I'd like to think the mayor has more role than floating, but...
I would feel also, if you were to go back to this without our discussion this evening, if you go back to this and you look at that, you're definitely going to say, "Overall event planning goes to the commissioner of accounts and finance." That's how this plays out right here.
So what would you want to...
Would probably be up at the top, perhaps. Overall of the council?
Why don't we, why don't we just...
Take that out, and then money handling and event finance, but do we all, do we have a consensus that obviously Becky would be the point person on a lot of this stuff? Because, I mean, I think she's displayed confidence, or confidence in how she's done it. I don't, I don't really want to take anything away from her.
In the event that Becky picks up and leaves, I mean, and it leaves you with this, or someone comes in that doesn't really know what they're doing, and if they're forceful enough, they're going to come back and look at this and be, hey, I'm telling you, I have the control over this.
I think, I think whoever runs, I do like the idea of a point person for that.
I think that's all we have to do.
Okay, so what Commissioner Udis is showing here is basically tie all the gray boxes together, and then that would be your formality.
The mayor are over everything, and in my absence, if there's something with any of my people that you guys need to intervene, then you're still a commissioner. In my absence, why don't we just make it for that much of a large event that we all are empowered the same?
So...
There you go.
That is something, I wasn't planning to talk about that today, but this has come up. So all superintendents in departments of offices are agents of the council. So what that means is all department heads are responsible to the council as a whole, but as an individual, they're technically only accountable to that commissioner. So in other words, what that means is there's a council member that has a question for a department head or something like that. They have every right to get information or do stuff like that, but they can't be setting a policy there. So I would be concerned if you were to say like the commissioner of streets would give a direction to the chief of police under any reason, you know, in an emergency.
No, I think it's a matter of just professional courtesy, where if I ever needed something from Chief Margas, my starting point has always been go to Terry. I won't say anything to the chief or any of the police officers until after I've talked to Commissioner Udis, and that's just professional courtesy, I feel.
Okay. All right, so why don't we modify that flow chart if we want to going forward?
And I'll take, I'll take the overall event planning out of there. I just wanted to...
I think having it in there is good, but tying it to the council, I think is a good thing to have.
Why don't, why don't we just...
That's an easy fix.
Yeah, I think all we do is before you have it go to your individual departments, you have a sideline coming over here from the beginning, and you come down here with everybody and just put it beneath the mayor, so we're all connected and have event planning.
Yep.
And then now your flow chart works.
Okay. I know we talk about a lot of logistics here, so I'm good with it. I just think that, again, we got to get, this is the one action item that we do have to take if we want to change what is in our event coordinator ordinance. Do we want to, I would prefer to go back to something like this, to where we have departments have responsible roles, whatever that is. Whatever, whatever commissioner wants to direct to their employees about how we handle certain roles, do we... Okay. Do we want to rescind this ordinance then?
That's exactly what I...
Yeah.
Can we do that since we don't have act on it?
It does on there. I put it on there just in case, because I thought this might come up. I said discuss and possibly modify. It's very vague.
Rich, this is the one you wanted to rescind, right?
But it's an actual act on it, Jason.
I think so. Because if we don't act on it...
We need to rescind this.
I'll make a motion. We nullify ordinance number 1168-0621, an ordinance providing for additional compensation for Oglesby employees, assuming the role of event planners.
I'll second that.
Rescind, right?
Rescind, yeah.
Rescind, nullify, rescind.
All right, motion to the floor. Roll call, please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is, all those things are, oh, council chambers, okay. Discuss potential city hall renovation, man, we're running short on time. Discuss and possibly approve, no, sorry, potential hall renovation and/or council chambers modification. So I think we all kind of had a consensus talking that we wanted to have something that's more professional, appealing that we have here at City Hall. So I reached out to numerous engineers or architectural firms that I had from an IML conference in the past. None of them responded. I responded to, I got ahold of one that we could buy furniture, where it's a put-together kit that you do yourself. It looks pretty good, but it's relatively cheap, and we have to put it all together ourselves. And the last one I called, I called who did our IVRD building, Comets Architects. They came out here, and I will tell you, I don't know if I talked about this last time. Interestingly enough, they had a full detailed plan of everything with all the measurements, and I don't think I've told you this yet. They had full detailed plans of measurements and everything for our building, and I'm, and Rich was here at the time. I went, how the heck did he get this? Apparently, in the year 2000, the council contacted his firm when he was the new hire there, and they came out and put something together. He had a fully detailed everything. It had some weird thing where the mayor was up a little higher, though, for whatever reason, which didn't make sense in commission form of government. But, but I was very impressed that they had something like that. So Rich and I talked to him about what we think we wanted and everything, and he went back to give us an item. Well, what came back, though, is just in architectural fees alone was about nineteen thousand dollars. And then when I asked, I said, "Well, here's my question," because I was thinking something around thirty to forty thousand for the whole thing, is what I was hoping for. What is your, you know, what is, the information I got back was, well, we're probably thinking your whole upgrade would be a hundred and twenty thousand. I have not had a chance yet today, but I wanted to look up what the value of this entire building even was. Because a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for just what we're sitting on, I think is excessive. I don't know, but I don't want to overrun anybody. What do people think about that?
Well, I've got a question. Can we pull the bills from the year that that architecture, you know, study got done? And see if we paid them for it? Because if we did, why do we have to pay again?
Well, I don't, it didn't look like it was finished, finished. It wasn't archi, it was a sketch drawing that did have some measurements on it.
I thought they had everything all...
No, it wasn't. But I was, I mean, they had like the dimensions of the mayor's office, the building and everything around it. So they, so somebody came in and did some measurements. Sure. Well, we're not, we're not there yet. We're, we're going to talk about that in a second. But that's, that's on the item. I'm just giving the background right now. So basically, I do think that's a little bit high in price for what we need to do. I think it would look nice, but... So we came up with some different suggestions of different stuff here, and I came up with some options, and actually Tony actually started with the very first one here. He's got a recommendation of going with a nice big screen behind us, or behind us or off to the side. And at first, I'll be honest, I was against that idea.
I couldn't tell.
But that's because before I got the quote price of what it was, because I didn't want to make sure we put, I didn't want to put something up that was going to interfere with what we're trying to build, if we want to get something nice, because there was talk about raising it up just six inches or something above. But now my thoughts are, whatever option we do besides there, it's probably going to take a significantly long time. And then I paired that with, if you look at what we have here for our technology, last, last council, the microphones and speakers came in first, and we made sure that they tied in with a future camera system. So technically, what we have here today was put in in two stages already. So if there's the idea that we want to bring a screen in here to look more professional, to have presentations and stuff like that, as long as that screen, if we end up going with something very different, I'm for that, as long as it could end up going downstairs, because I think we want to update our conference room down there for formal meetings at some point in time. So there's lots of different options we talked about. We talked about we could purchase the basic furniture that we put together. That was only about fourteen thousand. I could continue to reach out to architectural firms, even though they haven't responded yet. There was another suggestion that we could go with local construction business, for them to come in and actually just give direct quotes. And the reason this ties in a little bit is Tony has been talking about an item that we probably need to think about doing, is the clerk's office is very tiny. There might, there is value probably in expanding that, so that way actual other meetings can happen in there. Because there could be, there are times where an employee would have to come in and say, "I need to talk about something that's going on. I need a paperwork that needs to get filled out for this. I need to put in for IMRF." I think that there's a right for some of that stuff to be private, and right now in that office, it's not very conducive to that environment. So this ties in with the option, if we wanted to do with the construction option. Or the other option is that I know of is, we can completely wait until this year's IML conference, and we'll get fresh, fresh vendors at the IML conference. That's everything in a nutshell. What do people think?
Do you want me to start?
Please.
So just to give the council, and I've talked to all of you about this individually, my, my thought is, when somebody comes up to the podium here with a laptop, especially if they're going to present to us something, there's really no way to really see what they're presenting. So what I intend here is a nice big monitor behind us, that when it's not being used, it'll have the logo and the crest for the city of Oglesby. During the day, it can have a slideshow of various pictures of civic events, Fun Fest, things like that. Somebody wants to come up and present to the council, they could go up there with their laptop, plug right in. It would pop up on this screen here. All we're doing is turning around, looking at the screen. The mayor would have a button here where he hits it, and instead of live streaming through the camera, they would see exactly what's on the screen. Soon as the presentation was done, he hits the button again, and we go back to the camera. All this can be done fairly cheap. We're talking like fifteen hundred dollars or less, and all the equipment and the parts can be used, even if we renovate council chambers. All they're doing is taking the wall mount down, taking the cables out, letting everybody do their, the contractors or whoever else do their thing, and then it would go right back up. And in the event that we come up with something different, it can be moved downstairs, or for executive session, if we need to put something on the screen, we can see it. For my purposes, for plan reviews, instead of them looking at blueprints on the table, which is kind of an archaic method nowadays, now we can put it up on a big screen. They can zoom in, zoom out, look at specific measurements. There's a value there. So I'm just trying to get us out of the Stone Age with it a little bit, and give us something that we can actually work with for cheap.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, just make the improvements and renovations functional and professional. We don't need to worry about the wow factor. We got a bunch of issues out there in the public that needs to be taken care of. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want a hundred and twenty thousand dollar desk for us to sit up on, but I do think, when I look at some of the other municipalities out there, most of them all have a nice wood, professional look and everything like that, and I think...
Right.
I don't know how to say that. I feel like in the past that we've had some presentations, and we've had very good presentations to them before they came, and then they get here, and then they see our city hall, and they go, oh. And they look at us differently for that, and I want to make sure that we're looking as professional as some of the other cities around us.
And I think giving us a little facelift is a point of civic pride and public perception that it does look nice. I'm not suggesting that we spend a hundred thousand dollars, but I do think if we take a responsible dollar amount and give us something nice, I mean, I think that that looks good for the city. It's not, it's not for me as a commissioner or any of us, I think personally, because we'll come and go over the years. But I do think it's something nice to, to show for on behalf of the city.
I guess I'd be curious...
All I want is a TV screen for right now.
And I think that's fair.
TV screen, decent desk, decent chairs.
And chairs.
Chairs, yes. And I will credit Commissioner McDermott with this, because he had a great idea. These chairs are so uncomfortable. I'm pretty sure we can afford a new set of chairs, and you had a good idea with it, but I'm not going to steal your thunder, so.
You can, all right, go ahead.
So, okay, so the other thing I came up with, if we're looking at doing some minor stuff there, one of the things I found out, I don't know if you would be interested in this look, but for the cost, we could put a tablecloth skirt in the front, so, I mean, we're talking forty bucks.
I think that's putting makeup on a pig, but that's just me.
So what about this? Can I, can I propose something? Okay, if, to bridge the gap, before, because you're going to have to have somebody come in, give you a quote, give you an estimate if you want woodwork and that kind of stuff done. If we went with the skirt, and then we had something, city of Oglesby in front of where the mayor sits here, in front of the center of it, that would sit on the front of it, I think at least temporarily, it's a nice presentation, as long as we all have the intention that we're going to go to something better than that. I think it's...
I'm not going to fight you over sixty, eighty bucks or whatever.
I don't even think it's public discussion worthy at this point.
Do we, do we want to go the route of getting, like you said originally, like maybe a construction thing in here, taking a look at what we can do? Because I think there's value at least getting a quote.
Well, that, yeah, that, you're talking about two-by-fours and drywall, and that's probably, I would tell you, less than a thousand dollars to get it done. I mean, all you're doing is just moving the wall out a little bit.
Well, I think maybe we should...
No plumbing, no...
Maybe we should get a couple quotes and a couple ideas from direct, you know, contractor.
Can I give the floor to Nick for a second? Nick, is there somebody who you know that, that would be capable of doing this type of work from a... Could you give us some leads after the meeting and some direction?
Perfect.
And as far as any of the electrical work, we have electricians on hand, so, and I have the highest confidence in them, so.
Greg, did you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, I've been asking for that television for years. I still kind of think this is the place for it, because you could plug in a flash drive real quickly for a guy like me, instead of, or, I like the idea of a cord running through the walls, maybe, or through all this. But this is convenient. Two other things. That camera, I wish it, maybe put it on a track. The connection in the wall could probably say exactly where it is, but put a track this way so that Becky is not behind that column, which that's probably a supporting column, cannot be removed, but that camera can be on a track that slides across and adjusts a little bit better for a better picture, so that she's in the shot. And these windows back here, I shot a picture when you guys changed console, and there's a blue trash can out there in the picture. Though these windows are way overdue for being just some kind of a scrim of plastic, up to the point where somebody can't make faces to the camera through those windows.
So let me, so there is some other window dressing things that I had in mind as well.
And I like the skirts thing, which may be foam core board instead of fabric that somehow attaches.
Well, that would be a temporary thing anyways, if we did do that, but...
But I generally like those things.
So I do want to keep it moving.
I heard somewhere you were thinking about a projector and a, and a screen, so that it could be bounced around to other activities? That's cool, except for the fact that usually those do not present well to a camera. The, a, a projection...
Greg, I do want to keep it moving. Thank you, though. I will tell you that there already has been talk about frosting the windows, because yes, it gets distracting when things happen behind there. I'd like to have some kind of crest or emblem that says city of Oglesby on the wall as well, but again, this is all stuff that we're looking at. You know, I think we'll go with the contractor first, and if it don't work, the last one I have on here, we could wait till the IM, you know, this year's IML conference to get more vendors, but I'm concerned at that point, we're going to be looking at big price tags as well, but...
I think that's where, what you had about a hundred thousand dollar bid is going to come into play, because those are for municipalities and the burbs that have big dollars to spend. I think for us, we need to be responsible with the taxpayer dollars a little.
Is everybody good with the idea of putting some type of screen up here in the meantime, that we do a little bit more window dressing? See if we can get some contractors coming in?
Do we need a motion or anything for that?
I just want to make sure we have consensus.
Yeah, I think we have...
I think we just network with Nick and get some people in here to take a look.
Hundred percent.
I want to keep things moving as best we can here. Some of these will be very short conversations, but I really don't want to go well past two hours. The next one is Discuss Check Valve Installation Incentive Program. This was an item that came up at the last council meeting, and whether you want to say, whatever reason you want to say, it kind of died for motion. We didn't, we didn't get anything moving with it. I have the stuff in everybody's packets, the exact stuff that was presented like four or five months ago. It is, it's basically come from LaSalle. LaSalle has a program like this for people that have experienced, you know, backups for their sewer in their home. It's only for people that actually had proven damage, that we would put a check valve in for them. We split half the cost with them, so it's basically an incentive for them. What's everybody's thoughts on that, or do we, because we're short on time, do we want to move this to a future one?
I think this can be moved to a future working meeting.
Anybody else quick on that, or do you just want to move it to a future one?
Do you guys move on?
Let's move.
Okay, I'm just gonna, we're gonna move. All right, next one is Discuss and Possibly Approve Communication... We're gonna move. Alright, uh, next one is discuss and possibly approve communications hazard plan version one point two. So, I cleaned it up quite a bit here. I will tell you that from what we currently have, the biggest changes I added was, uh, uh, train personnel for the code red system. Terry has added to that. I explained a little bit more detail, uh, what code red will be sent for. It was kind of vague in there. It just basically said boil orders and water outages before. So now it, uh, it has other things in there. It talks about the electrical outages, uh, major road closures, activation of warming centers or cooling centers. And then there was another thing I put in there, all the way on H. This is where it came up about, uh, our code red system. This is where some people were upset that they didn't get a code red message, for example, because of a, a minor interruption we did. Cause we didn't wanna really wake people up at midnight, but for Cookie Kingdom, for example, it cost them about fifteen hundred pounds of product. So it, it reads like this, minor items relating to service interruptions that would not constitute a citywide notification will be sent to predetermined drop down list. Uh, who sign up for each such notifications as an example. And then I just basically have who could send that, elected official, appointed officials, department pets. That's one additional item there added. And then, I did put something in there for the siren system. Before it just said, it simply said this, lack of details with audible warning makes small hazards and outages not very useful. I added the line, however, in an emergency when outdoor residents in the city could benefit from audible instructions or a warning, elected officials or appointed officials may choose to utilize it as a means for audible communication. So, and I'll talk about that in my, my little report here. I think we are gonna do a siren test on the fourth of July as we, we discussed here. What else is added to this? As far as social media, um, our public property, um, commissioner wanted to have addition to it as well, which I think has value because there is electrical outages that happen, so that was added. And that was essentially it, I think. I, I can't think of anything else that, that got added to anything else. So, I know I'm, I'm not trying to rush because of time, but, so this is what I'm hoping to go for version one point two. Is everybody good with those changes? Is there something else they wanna add to it?
I, I'm good with it, Jason. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. I just wanna make sure that the council is understanding that as it pertains to this audible system with the siren, I don't want my departments involved because in the event of an emergency, they're gonna be so busy with other stuff. So my, if I go through this, I wanna make sure you guys understand that it probably shouldn't be emergency services that are handling that.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, we can wait to, to do it because it might not have any value at all. That's why I'm hoping, so, one of the things I was gonna talk about is we have a means to do the siren test. I have no idea how valuable it is if, if people can even hear anything. And like Terry and I were talking, if there really was an emergency to where somebody needed to say, hey, everybody clear the streets because of something going on, is, is the cop gonna stop, whoever's on duty, are they gonna stop what they're doing to go down to the police station and make that thing, or are they gonna be handling the incident? They're gonna be handling the incident. So, so I think there's, there, even if, even if people can clearly hear, there might not be a lot of applicability for it. But I'd like to at least know if it's an option.
I personally don't have a problem approving it as long as we all had that understanding. That, that's all I wanted, was a verbal.
Okay, now, for what everybody's, so just so everybody, cause I don't know if everybody's seen this whole thing before. This came out of creation because of the, we have an, uh, emergency, uh, what is it, what is it called? The disaster plan. We have a, we have a disaster plan. It is not a public document. There is all kinds of crazy things in there of scenarios that could happen that are terrible disasters. When we had our derecho, there wasn't anything in there like that. So that's what this whole document came from, is to talk about how we deal with communications hazards and outages and stuff. So that's, it's basically a supplement to that. This thing can be public, the other one cannot because it, it has staging areas for terrorist attacks and crazy things like that, so. Any questions on it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve the city of Oglesby communications hazards and outages plan version one point two.
I'll second that motion.
Walter?
Hi.
Boudis?
Hi.
McDermott?
Hi.
Stefan Allen?
Hi.
Kern?
Hi. Next up is the most boring of them all here. Um, I was hoping to put this at the end, but we had a whole bunch of new things that people wanted to add. I, I think we talked about this, that we didn't wanna necessarily go through the book, line item by line item, but so, I put something out to the commissioners that they'd like to look through there and tell me if there's anything in section one that they think needs to get modified. I looked through section one. I didn't see anything in value there. It's very big and basic stuff. It talks about like the timekeeping of the city and corporate seal, city jail, that will honor daylight savings times. I mean, there's, these are things in here that are very old and, but they all have some kinda relevance. Once we get into section two, that's where there's a lot of things that I think we could start talking about removing. Like, I think there's stuff in there about us holding death records and stuff like that.
We're, we're on, on the new agenda that was put out. We're at number twenty-two for this one, so I just wanna make sure the commissioners are where. I was lost until Becky just pointed it out.
You have a different one?
Yeah, I've got an updated, um, agenda. With number twenty-two is where that's at. That's, that's why I was confused.
Down, that's fine then. What, what do you have then? Do you have the supply purchase then?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I had next.
Okay, we'll do that anyways. Okay. Discuss possible centralized supply purchase. Terry, I know you presented this before. Do you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, I just think it, it makes sense, um, to buy in bulk for the, the stuff we're using on a regular basis. Toilet paper, paper towels, uh, cleaning supplies, all that stuff that, that we use fairly regularly and have it stored somewhere on city property for our departments to, to take as, as they need it. Instead of going to Walmart or going to Family Dollar, going to Debo's or whatever and what, running all over the, uh, Illinois Valley looking for stuff. I just think it's, it, it has merit and it makes sense. It's gonna save us money in the long term. And I, I just wanna know if you guys are interested in even looking at that. And if you are, I will bring back some options and maybe get, get some services in here that handle this, to talk to us. I did this during a previous council meeting before this council and it just kinda died. So I didn't know whether you guys were, were interested or not.
I would support it.
I'm very interested.
Instead of sending employees out for things like a roll of paper towels or a case of water, that's something we can order and bulk have on hand, and I think our productivity won't be affected.
Fair enough. I will come back, uh, one of these future meetings and have people here to talk to us and some different options.
Perfect. Okay, excellent. Uh, next up, I think the next four, uh, Mac, these are items that you wanted to discuss. Discuss street parking and potential safety concerns.
Okay, as far as I know, the, uh, street, uh, parking lot has been done. I, uh, don't know if that's enough parking spaces. Also, we need to, uh, look at, well, I kinda combined it all, all them together.
Okay.
We had the street parking and the potential safety concerns with people parking along the side of the streets. People coming out of side roads. We had one time, not too long ago, a person got hit on a motorcycle, I believe, wasn't it? And, um, they brought it to the attention. We've since then painted on the curves. I've been advised, maybe we wanna paint them a little bit further, make them a little bit longer. But I don't wanna impede on the businesses in town. We could look into, uh, maybe more parking places, but we'd have to figure out where we're gonna put them. I've also had people come to me about the sidewalks, where we had people that walk along the sidewalks. And then there is none, and they're walking along the street, even people riding their bikes. We gotta see the ordinances on them, and I'll admit, I was, I got, I got the book, I got the bible here. Meniscus Bible, I was gonna read, read them out. But we've had them in books for so long and we haven't really enforced some of the rules. And I'll put it together in the next meeting or next working meeting and see if there's any route we can take to actually make it fair for everybody and find better places for parking or, you know, anybody got any ideas?
Well, I think for the setbacks on the streets, Mac, I would probably have a, a conversation with Jim Kleiner and ask him what the parameters are to meet code on that, cause I'm sure there's, there's code as it pertains to.
So I will say that for the one, the, the corner you're talking about, there is a little bit of irony going on here. When I, when I looked at that, I don't know why, but the, the, the paint has severely degraded. It looks like it, for whatever reason, it looks like it only goes five feet. The standard throughout the city, if it's not marked in the ordinance book, is fifteen feet. The, the irony is, I know that they, that your guys have worked to start updating and refreshing paint.
Right.
And they ran out of paint, but I don't know why they didn't start in the corner that was the severe. Cause that's the one that's still not updated yet.
I believe what it was is when they seen the curb was available, they got right on it.
Okay. Is, when you were talking about sidewalks, just give you a heads up, this has been an ongoing issue.
I am working on a fix for that. So I, yeah, I, just to give you an idea, um, this'll be something that would have to go to the planning commission. It'll come back, but I do, I do have an idea of how we can make this work because right now, it's at the time of letter of occupancy, and I think if we do it at the time of permit, you know, then it, it ensures on our end and the city's end that the money is in escrow there where once the house is already built, you really have no recourse. You can tell them you're not giving them the letter of occupancy, but the house is built and there's still no sidewalk. I think if we do it that way.
We gotta make sure that the sidewalk is built before they get that letter of occupancy.
Hundred, hundred percent. I, I'm working on it. I want you to know I'm working on it, and that'll be one of the things that I present to you guys.
And I will tell you, there's, there's actions that we've already done on that, and, and Tony's taken it a step further to do that. But again, that just solves the problems going forward. I think what you're talking about is there was a period of times where it was, where it was required to have in the city, and then a lot of people didn't do it and the, and the city council didn't enforce it at the time. So now we're in this, this limbo thing. I will tell you that a lot of these ones are trying to be rectified through that, uh, that sidewalk program, safe around the school. I think we're still waiting on environmental studies to see if it's even gonna go further. But we're still kinda in a holding pattern, the, the red tape.
And I'll get with you, you know, on the stuff that I'm talking about doing. I'll definitely get with you, and so this way, when I go to present it, it'll, it'll all be crystal clear and make sense.
Anything else on street parking and sidewalk stuff?
Well, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, uh, next you had on here was discuss cost of renting versus purchasing departmental equipment.
Basically what that is, I'm wanting to know, how's everybody feel about? How far do you go renting on something before you buy where? Okay, I'm running to things that seems like we're using certain items over and over and over. Where then if we just buy our own, in the long run, it'd pay for itself.
Any chance you can give us some numbers on how much we're spending annually on that equipment and what the cost of the, of purchasing our own would be? That way we can have some, some perspective?
Working on that.
Okay.
But like, Mayor Kern was talking about, we, uh, use, the city clerk's quite a bit. I didn't get all my information yet.
Yeah, and I, I'm sure she'll be totally happy to help you out with any numbers that you need and any, you know, any of the billing.
Becky at all. She's, she's phenomenal.
Yeah, she'll, she'll help you out with anything that we've paid out in rental costs and all that.
It's time to get those window coverings.
Yeah, get it soon enough. Talked about it. Are we, should we motion to put that on tomorrow? I know that it was.
He just flagged Parkus down from outside the window.
Hey. Alright, we're running out of time. I, I wanna talk to, about the, um, you also have something on here about discuss auctioning large equipment items. Do you think that's important enough that you wanna talk about today, or should, can we skip it for today?
I think we can skip that for today, if that'd be okay.
Okay. Um, discuss updated personnel policy one point one. I, I will tell you, okay, briefly, we have a current personnel policy that all employees look at and they sign. I added numerous sections to it, uh, how to report public property damage, uh, how we properly use vacation, sick leave and paid, paid time off. And then some discrep, uh, discussions of disciplinary procedures, cause they're in our union labor contract, but they don't define anything. So what I did was I, I got all this together, I showed it to the commissioners and I sent it over to our labor attorneys. They went through, they made a lot of great recommendations. In fact, they even went through, that's why it's in color. The areas in black is what it was back when it was originally created. They even had some legal recommendations of changing to those words as well that would protect us a little better. So there's a lot of really good things in there. However, when all this stuff was coming up, some new stuff came up that was brought to our attention. For example, in January of next year, in twenty twenty-four, there is gonna be a new requirement to where part-time people will get vacation hours to them. And if we don't have any kind of policy that covers it, we're gonna be forced to be run under whatever the state mandate is. But if we include it in our policies that we have now, we'll be grandfathered into control of what our policies have. So that's being added. We, what, there's another item that's being, what was the other? Terry, can you remember what the other item was? There's two items that he's being added.
I, I don't, Jason. I mean, I have a lot of, a lot of notes on this. I don't know if we wanna go through it tonight, or whether you wanna get together
No.
with my concerns later.
No, we, if, if there's concerns you have, we can always chat about it and stuff, or we can send it over to the labor attorney. What I'm trying to brief everybody is they're making those changes, those additional changes. Oh, it was, uh, not IMRF, Family Leave Act for, for if people wanted to.
FMLA.
FMLA, sorry, thank you. We don't have a po, a written policy about how we go about it. We, we have just the, what's on the, uh, um, the state website. So there's been some confusion of that, of how somebody would go about doing that. So we're gonna get that put into the policy. And, uh, so if there's other things that you wanna put in there too, like if we're gonna put stuff about the maternity.
Something I wanna put in there, stuff I wanna modify or take out.
Okay, so if there's things you have, because I know we're gonna, I think the council wanted to go the direction of the maternity policy. I think that, uh, the maternity stuff is gonna be with the side letter agreement, but the part about, uh, light duty, I think would be covered in something like this. So we'll, we'll get that moving. Um, and then when I have a more updated version, but I just wanna brief everybody, that's where we're at with that, with what's going on. So it was a really good discussion we had with them, and I'm happy that we did because now we're gonna be covered for this, uh, part-time stuff.
Hey, Jason, just circling back real quick, I think there was some misunderstanding on, on the direction that I was talking about.
Sure.
With the, the maternity leave policy, I really think it needs to go in its, in its entirety into the, the manual here, because if you don't, then, like I said, our unions are gonna be, getting a benefit above and beyond what our non-union employees are, and I, I don't want it really to be that way. I want everybody to get the same benefit.
We'll have to have that talking. I, I thought that he said there might be a problem if you're gonna give them a benefit of that nature. Cause remember how he said about the, what was it, the turkeys? Remember he talked about the turkeys?
I wasn't out for the whole. I, I just stayed.
There for that?
I don't think the turkeys. I, I don't remember any talk.
Was that after Terry jumped off? They, they talked about the turkeys? There was a major federal thing because a company gave.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes.
Turkeys are, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And if you give some, if you give something to them, they're gonna, the, the union could come back and say, you, that wasn't, and it was. It was an illegal use of giving somebody something that had a monetary amount. Yep.
And, and I'm, I'm totally on board with that. What I'm saying is if we don't put it in here, then our non-union employees are not gonna be entitled to that benefit, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
That would be my, is that right, Pat? Is that correct?
Yes.
We can put it in both. Okay. Uh, next item is old business items. Briefly, um, did you wanna talk about the results from the park board meeting?
I wasn't at the park board meeting.
Okay, you got a letter though from it, right?
No, I did not.
I thought you had.
I will discuss that, uh, I would like to have council approval with the, uh, lawyer drawing up permission to use public property for the dog park and, uh, submit the, uh, what's his, uh, Ron Kreiser's estimate on putting up the fence for the dog park. And signage will be coming soon, but I don't have it available yet, so. Gonna take a little steps to get this moving, but.
So what, Rich is.
I don't know what we're talking about.
I'll back up then. The park board, when they got together, it, it was, it was good me, there was, it was very, it was a little, uh, jumbled because they didn't have an agenda at the time. They just, the same night that they met, they, they put, they made a chairman. But out of the two, they had a couple recommendations, and one of them was, they did recommend that they thought the best part, place for a dog park in the city was at, across from, uh, Lehigh, down there. So that, that's what he's talking about. So Rich, Rich has been wanting to push the, the, get the, the dog park going. I wanted to make sure that we had a public meeting to where we had some kinda consensus. Now, they didn't go over finances or priorities or other kinda recommendations, but they, they did have a recommendation that they thought that was the best location. So I think what Rich is intending is, at the next meeting, he has a quote to finish the fencing for everything. He'd like to approve the, the fencing, and I think the question we had for our city attorney is, is there anything special we have to do to create a piece of public land designated as now city park?
No, I just think that you guys as a council, according to your code, need to approve that location.
Okay.
That could be done in a motion, in a second, in a vote at the next council meeting. You may also agree, depending upon how much money's gonna be spent on the fence and stuff.
Well, he has that.
Approve those expenditures if they exceed, uh, ten thousand dollars as the woman for, Mr. Renn.
Twenty, twenty thousand. And over. Twenty, twenty thousand, and over twenty-five would have to go out for bid.
So really, we don't even need to approve the purchase, we just need to approve the location to use it.
Location.
Correct, because you're using the city's property for a particular purpose.
Okay.
That needs to be approved by the council.
We could probably just do it all in one motion is what I'm thinking.
Rich, I have a question.
Do we have to wait till the next meeting to do that or can we?
Yeah, I think you do.
Just do it now?
Cause we're changing, we're changing what the land is used for.
Okay.
Cause somebody could come down and say, I don't want to park there.
Yeah, I know, I get it, I'm just saying, just to keep things moving along.
I get you, I know, I want to wrap this up soon.
So my question is just real quick, when, when I did my recon on a, on a dog park, the biggest suggestion I got from neighboring communities that have them is that we should have two, two parts. So a fence down the middle so that we always have one in use and the other one to recover on the grass or else they said you're gonna have a mud pit. If you don't alternate between the two sides, so is ours set up that way so that?
It is not due to the cost, I assume that.
I think it would be money well spent, in my opinion.
Do you want to get a second quote from them?
Two hundred foot by two hundred foot is the dimensions of the dog park inside, so I'm thinking that you probably don't need that. If we do run into issues, we could possibly put the fence up later. I'm just thinking of right now to save taxpayers' dollars and get this up and running. I would like to just get the fence put across there and see if it does, if it does turn out to be that way, we can separate it and do it that way.
Just, I would encourage you to talk to, I think it's LaSalle is the one who was having all kinds of problems and ended up going that route. Would you just touch base with them and talk to them about their experiences?
I know Ken Kowalski.
Maybe it was Peru, Peru maybe.
I did talk to Mr. Giggie who runs it, so, yes, he did, he did suggest that, but I also have been over to that park. When you come into the entrance, it's, it's more narrow where ours is going to be a big square of two hundred feet. I don't see that happening, but you can't predict, like this here, it would be terrible.
It's your department, so it's how you want to run it, but I would recommend, we could ask him to give us a second part of a quote, what if it's three hundred?
This is gonna get done, like, this is done at the next meeting, this is, we're moving on.
What if it's three hundred dollars to put an extra amount of fencing in for a second?
I'll ask him, I will ask him, yes.
Yeah, I'm saying, I mean, if it's gonna take it from nine thousand to twenty thousand, then maybe we probably don't want to do it.
I think one of Rich's concerns is diminishing the size of the wide open area and would we have to go four hundred by, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty big size then. Were you talking about having it as two separate sections or just the entrance? Cause I thought it was the entrance that got money.
Some, yeah, and I have two separate entrances already included in this, in this bit. There's two separate four-foot double entrances with a ten-foot gate to allow for the mowing and such to get in there, so I don't see it being a problem. I've looked, I hope it's not, but we can deal with that later on if it does become a problem.
Okay, next on the item then, so we'll expect that coming on the next agenda, perfect. Discuss results from facade committee meeting on how to set aside money for future facade improvements. So what this is, is. If you take a look at it, this is the updated version. So the version that I sent with you last time had a lot of green marks on it. Now, keep in mind, if we do nothing, it still exists for this year, but then at the end of this year, it's gone. So, what it does is it changes it to where there's group A and group B. Group A is essentially what the facade improvement program is now, with, with two changes. One, it, it removes, it removes the need to be in TIF one, specifically TIF one. So it expands the distance and stuff like that. And the other thing it does is, it raises, it raises the amounts, I think they recommended, what is it, five thousand? They moved it up by five thousand. And that's about it, it exists in everything else. It basically says it's for existing operating businesses right now. Group B is where it is specifically for businesses or buildings that are not operating. There is no active business in it, it is vacant, I think they actually changed the word to say vacant, actually. The difference is, the cost amount of money that they give to the vacant one is higher. And the percentage that they give out is higher. The big thing that I was so appreciative that the council got together on, or not the council, the committee, is that I needed some help making sure that we have. I almost want to call them clawbacks, basically things that prevent a business from coming in and trying to abuse it. My concern would be if it's a vacant building, that somebody buys the building, already owns the building and, and they don't have an intention to put a business in it, but they get money from the city to improve their building and all they did was increase their equity. That was my concern, I wanted to make sure that wasn't the case. So they came up with some language that if it's a vacant building, yes, they can get more money, but basically they get paid out in different, different parts. They only get a third of it upfront, they get a sixty-six percent, what does it say here? Sixty-six percent of the permanent will be held in escrow until a new business locates into the renovated building. After one year of business not opening, the rent and grant monies will be forfeited. So basically it gives them a motivation to make sure that the business actually gets open to get the rest of the money. I know I'm not trying to rush it now, tonight, this is not the final product, they are gonna meet again to give us a final product. The big things that we have to talk about is, one, do we want to continue it? Two, do we want to accept the dollar amounts, do we want to raise them, do we want to modify them? And three, how do we want to set money aside in the future for next year and beyond? Because right now, we've done resolutions to set a hundred thousand dollars of TIF money away after this year, that is no longer an option. We're gonna have to specifically appropriate for general funds or, you know, stuff like that. So, I don't know if we want to get into that discussion right now, but I want to have it on your minds, does anybody have any major renovations to this, to this program of changes they'd like to do? Or hear or see?
Well, I think when you look at our downtown, it's, it's needed in areas and I like the idea of splitting it between the two groups to entice new business to take advantage of the program. So, I, I believe in investing in our community and in our businesses, so you have my support on it.
Yeah, so what I told them basically was, I said, I, I think this is one of the more successful incentive programs that we have. There's a lot of incentive programs I'm hoping that we'll want to do, but to me, this is already a working baby, right? It works, we have a couple of businesses that have used it that have just, that look amazing and they look beautiful. But the one thing that we haven't done a lot with, with it, it doesn't help target the vacant buildings as much. It's, it's made a lot of good businesses we have even better and more functional. But I'd like to have the second part to try to target ways to get the empty buildings filled in with stuff. That, that is the ultimate goal, the question we need to ask ourselves is, how much do we think we should be putting away to spend on something like this? My simple answer is more.
I agree.
Sure.
Yes.
Absolutely.
On the vacant buildings, facades, it pretties up its lipstick on a pig in terms. It fixes up the streetscape and makes the whole streetscape look better. And as far as getting your money back, well, it's always been a concern of mine that it will automatically increase the property taxes. And if you never rent your building out, well then you're gonna lose through property tax increases.
Okay. There is a provision that talks about the percentage of outside versus inside and if I'm correct, the percentage.
Outside is outside.
I understand that, but there is a percent, I wanted to continue to use the same program. There is a thing in there that talks about the amount of percentage that can be inside work as well. So, any questions on that? They are meeting again to try to finalize some more stuff on it, but I wanted to make sure I had a working prototype in front of you guys to take a look at today. I know we're getting into that hour, right?
Okay.
Two hours and eighteen.
Yeah, gotcha. Alright, next one, I will talk about this for ten seconds. Update on, sorry, did you have?
No, you're fine.
Okay. Update on public utility abatement incentive. I know I talked to everybody about this and they said, yes, we should investigate a little bit more. Well, I have and unfortunately, there is some concerns with it. My goal was to make an incentive program that's gonna focus on large industry customers. The problem with this is, it is so complex. That I reached out to our, our water engineers, our sewer engineers, our electrical engineers, the I M E A. And it's very difficult to put a specific program together that's gonna target large businesses. There is some options that we're still looking at that might be for small businesses. But again, that would almost run side by side with facade improvement when we're talking about how much money we can give a small business on their utility breaks. The big concern is, I want to find a way to focus on large utilities. So the update basically is, it's complicated. Still working on some, I don't have a working prototype to give you. Okay. Is there any other old business items that somebody wants to talk about? Okay, now it's the official public comment time. Let's try to keep it short if we can though, cause we gave people opportunities to talk in the middle.
You skipped right from the dog park, you skipped the softball field drainage, the disc golf in Seneca Square. And I got an earful today on our city pool is, if, if you're trying to train a kid to learn how to be an Olympic swimmer, it's great for that, you can spend all day down there. But as far as kids want to have a good time and spend hours down there, they prefer LaSalle pool. Because of all the amenities that LaSalle has, it's an extra buck and that's where they want, they want the extra buck to go to LaSalle.
Okay, well, pool wasn't on our list to talk about, it did say softball field drainage, all that kind of stuff like that. I will tell you, the reason I didn't mention anything about it is because the park board didn't have a recommendation on those items. The item that they had a recommendation for was dog park location. Okay. Commissioner updates.
Tony?
I have nothing at this time, anything I have will be next meeting.
Mac?
I have nothing at this time.
Rich? Okay, the only thing I got is, we got some stuff on the code red stuff, it is in our new plan, com plan. I need to find a way to get this out to people, I know that there's some businesses out there and residents, if they are interested, we are looking to put a dropdown list together to give communication to people for code red. If there is something on there that is, that we would normally not go out to the entire general public. For example, at one AM in the morning, to let people know that there's gonna be a five-minute power cycle for, for some kind of transformer that's gonna happen at four AM. Normally, we would not make people's phones ring for stuff like that. However, there are some businesses that would have value in doing that. So, I already have a couple of those lists, but as we'll put that information out and we'll build that list together. There's only been a couple of times that we've ever needed to use something like that, but if it's gonna cost businesses money, it's important. Siren test. We got the word that the siren does have a capability for it, I talked with Terry about this. At first, I wasn't sure if we should do Fourth of July, but after thinking about it a little more, I think it works out pretty good. The Fourth of July is the next Tuesday where the siren test is gonna happen. So just to make people aware, immediately after the siren test, I'll attempt an audio test over it. My exact words will be, this is a test of the Oglesby emergency siren. Again, this was only a test. I'll do my best to enunciate those words as clear as I can, that way we can find out how clear it is to understand at one block, three block and ten plus blocks away, if it even works. So, that is all I got. Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll second that.
That was the quickest report I can do.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, everybody. We're gonna have to do a much better job of trying to get this under two hours. It's tough, it's tough. It's hard, we skipped some stuff too. You can recess, we can recess. Yeah, I know, I know, I know, thank you, everybody. We can't call it a park?
Right. Because then it's protected species moving forward.
Protected species, species, the, the dog is native to the land? They're native to it? My God, the Indian abat, now the, the. I'm so sorry. Always thank you for everything, so we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep pushing, no, no, we'll keep pushing. I know, I know, I know, we're just trying to chew through and get this stuff. I thought we spent a little too much time talking about the animal. I just don't think they understand what I'm trying to say. You don't know what the secondary effect could be with angry residents or something. Okay. Dom, how are you? Sorry for the long meeting.